This conference will now be recorded.
And in attendance, in the meeting room, we have Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Flaherty, and our district manager, Chris Schumaker. Via teleconferencing, we have Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Feinberg, and our attorney, Tony Pierce. And if you please join us for the Pledge of the Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance, do you do the flag?
United States of America, to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
I'm pretty disjointed. It's sort of like this stuff.
Tell me, Brad, do you have anything to start the meeting with? Any governmental proclamations on go to meeting?
Our update, a couple of updates. Thank you, Madam Chairman. One, I think we have established, and Chris is manager. Madam Chairman, if we can utilize the same process where on any actions that are taken, whether comments be made by board members on an item or votes to be taken, that the manager, Chris, go down the board one at a time to ask if they have any questions or comments. And then same thing, if any motion, ask them to vote in order. Additionally, it's important, I really appreciate the fact that you all, before the beginning of this meeting, while we're all sort of getting it together, you were talking about everything and everything else but district business. And that's important because of the sunshine law. There is a town council in Florida where they had these after-meeting or before-meeting conversations with some board members. And the state attorney's office is charging those individuals with noncriminal civil violations of the sunshine law because it wasn't technically part of the public meeting. They were, but they were a meeting. So I appreciate you all talking about masks, editorials, heat, and anything else but district business. You all have been very, I really appreciate that. Lastly, the executive order that allows remote technology to be utilized for board meetings and for the form to be established remotely has been further extended after much angst amongst the local government bar in the state of Florida. The governor, finally, on July 29th, two days before was to expire on midnight July 31st, extended the executive order so that we have now an extended period of time in which to, December 15th, in which to engage in these, in October 15th, excuse me, October 15th, to conduct these remote meetings. So October 15th, we've got that extension, so we're good to go if we want to do remote meetings.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. And I just want to remind anybody in the audience or even at home to please turn your phones to silence so we don't have phones ringing in the middle of the meeting. And Chris, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
I have not received any speaker calls. Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak today? I have no one in the audience, and there are no chats or inquiries online to make statements or public comments.
And Chris, you didn't receive any emails in advance either?
No, I've not received any emails regarding agenda items or the meeting debate.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, Chris, the three is staff reports, informational items. I guess that's district attorney. Start with you.
Yes, briefly, this is required by Florida statutes that the district publish either annually, quarterly, or monthly its meeting schedule. And what this, this provides the opportunity to not have to constantly advertise each and every board meeting that is listed in this schedule. The one advertisement takes care of it. If there are additional special meetings in addition to these, those meetings require separate advertisements. And one thing I would add, and I didn't get with Marilyn or Chris some time, is to add some communications media technology, remote access language, and we'll do that before it gets published in the paper.
Okay, do we need to adopt this?
Uh, yes.
Somebody make a question?
I make a motion to the House.
Somebody's Scott Echo.
I need the motion to approve the notice of regular meeting schedule for 2021. I'll second it.
Thank you.
I think we have Mike Spindas second. Go down the line for questions.
Heard any questions?
I'll mute everybody, and then I'll try when I'm going through.
Unmuted.
Mr. Banks, any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Steinberg, any questions?
Any questions on the?
Margaret, any questions on the motion?
So she's still muted. She's still muted.
No, she's muted herself.
Yeah, she's muted, Chris.
Okay, yes. Okay, Supervisor Tinkle, any questions on the motion?
Unmuted.
Okay, then we'll, we'll call the vote, and I'll go down in the same, same order. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Chair Feinberg?
You're muted, Margaret.
Give a thumbs up.
Okay. We've got the thumbs up. And Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, five to O unanimous vote to adopt the fiscal 2021 annual meeting schedule.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Echo's just stopped. Okay, Tony, do you have any other items today?
Just one item. I think the board saw, and if not, I apologize, I'll send it, sent a letter out to Lennar WCI about the Pelican Preserve construction road. I don't have a response back yet, but Chris has a, I guess you can call it, an infield update as to the conditions out there. Chris, would you want to advise the board, let the board know?
Last week, when I was going through Pelican, because we go in the back way on that service road, and they had a different practice that never happened before, because usually the guard there will just wave me through in the gateway truck. And he actually stopped me, took the, my license tag number down, and I said, well, this is new, what's going on with it? And he said, well, we're stopping all the vehicles coming in to make sure they're construction vehicles. And I asked, I said, what about passenger vehicles? And he said, well, we have people that come out, and I stop them, and I let them know that they can't use the road, that we won't let them back in, so not to come out this way. So, and he was literally stopping every flat bit and even many vans full of workers and asking them who they were working for, what sub, and what the address list they were going to do the work on the house.
Yeah, I think what that shows is that they watch the board meetings. And that's okay.
I think they watch, they didn't learn because it's ingress and egress.
No, I understand, I agree. And the letter made it clear. So, but we'll see what kind of response we get back from them. And otherwise, just working with staff on a number of topics, working with Brian, and Glenn, and Laura, and Chris on a number of topics. So that's what I have right now until later on in the agenda.
Supervisor Flaherty has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was there anything to ask from the Attorney General?
No, I have one follow-up call, just to explain a footnote in the letter with regards to the fact that if the district was to convey the roads, the district would still retain all the utilities. And the Assistant Attorney General just needed some further clarification about what that meant. And I explained what the district has in the way of infrastructure and the road right away, and so she understood and heard nothing further.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, if you're finished, Tony, that brings us to District Engineer.
Yes, I am, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh, well, I'll fill in you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Danny Nelson for the record, Tetra Tech District Engineer. I have a few items on the agenda, so I'll try to go as quickly as I can. The first item is a figure at the last board meeting. The board had asked if we were talking about the roundabout and the improvements in Lee County's direction, regardless of which improvements they went with. They're going to require the utilities to be relocated, or not be relocated, but improved due to their age. So, the board asked if we could put a figure together just to kind of show the extent. First, if everybody will stand on their heads, because this is showing to you upside down. But basically, if you can imagine you're coming from Daniel's Preserve, or, sorry, Daniels Parkway, that would be at the top. And then heading towards State Route 82 would be at the bottom. The two green lines in the middle, that is the Gravity Sewer. There is also a force main that is shown. I don't think it came through on the scan, but there's a force main that's not shown that is on there as well to the south of the, that runs east-west basically across Gateway Boulevard and into Griffin right away. It's on the south side of the right. The biggest issues that we have are essentially in that north, that northeast corner. And that's where you see the four sets of valves. So we've got a 16-inch irrigation line that comes in, wraps around to the north. Then we have the existing 12-inch irrigation line that comes in and then branches off in the two sets. So you've got the north-south run and then east-west run. And then you have the water that's right basically there next to that. What I've done is I've transposed this onto, onto the roundabout design. You'll see that ad is basically right in the middle of that lane where those valves are at. I know that when those valves were tested previously, I believe at least some of those were, did not work, and I could be wrong, Chris, on that. But, so anyhow, you can kind of see the, the extent of what we're, of what we're dealing with. So it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of large pipe that needs to be, needs to be dealt with. So essentially, I don't know if you have any questions on that, but it's related to the next item, which is essentially the task authorization for us to design. But I moved to that if, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions about this.
Several questions on this. That with Chris and talk about. First of all, correctly, we have a 12-inch coming down Griffin from the office here. It goes to a four-way cross at the intersection on the northeast corner with 12s going north and south, and a 12 going west over toward Denny Grimes's office on Fairway. That 12-inch going north, does it tie into the 16-inch? Or is there a 16 and a 12 going north on Gateway Boulevard on the right-hand side, east side?
Are you, you talking about irrigation?
Yes.
Yeah, the irrigation, that 16-inch irrigation, that's the new line. So that wraps around and then ties back into the 12-inch line.
Okay, it wraps, so it goes under the 12, down the road a little bit, and then ties back into the 12 and terminates, and then going north is just a single 12?
Right. And the reason why it did that is just because of the, the complexity of what's there, all the congestion.
Okay, next thing. The 20-inch main, water main, I was not aware that I thought it went to the 16-inch, as you have shown, 16 going north, 16 going south, and then an 8-inch went across the road to Fairway Isles. Is that what?
It may. Part of our, so part of our scope is going to be to verify, you know, utilities. We're going to do subsurface utility exploration so we can verify some of this. And you may absolutely be right, that may be an 8-inch. In fact, I mean, it makes more sense that it's an 8-inch on that side.
Because that is basically a looped line through Fairway Isles office park, and a 20-inch going through there unless they're going to have one hell of a fire, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
There's store and ammonia nitrate over there or something. The other one, and this is the one that's got me bug more than any. On the west side of the road, which on the drawing you're looking at, or we're looking at, is coming from the north down Gateway Boulevard, under the sidewalk, is a 6 and 12 sanitary sewer force main. Coming from the south, under the sidewalk, is a 6 and 12 inch sanitary force main. They meet right about the end of your little green mark, and there must be six valves there. They then proceed due east down Gateway, or Griffin Drive, across and under Gateway Boulevard, has a 6 and a 12, all the way to the waste squat well, almost all the way to the waste squat treatment plant. None of those 6 and 12s are showing, but there's one showing, but that's it. That southwest corner where all those valves are is a disaster, because when we had the break at Gateway Greens, none of those valves worked.
Yeah.
On this drawing, and what I'm trying to figure out, is they appear to be, when I overlap this aerial photo, this is a colored photo of the design, I've never seen such a mess in my life as to the interference with the, I'm trying to figure out, how does the sidewalk go and tie into the new design? Because it looks like the sidewalk leaves the path that it's currently on. And are we going to have these valves following the sidewalk, or are they going to be out underneath the road? I can't tell. These drawings are the worst, or integrative drawings I've seen in 40 years.
I mean, until we get out there and actually can locate those, I can't tell you for sure. I mean, we, I don't know what the county will allow, if their preference would be to have these under the sidewalk or under the road itself. But, you know, as we know, by going to a roundabout type intersection, it basically takes up nearly the entire right-of-way, so you don't have a lot of green space. So you don't really have much of a choice, that it's, it's going under something impervious, whether it's asphalt or, 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 you know, or the concrete sidewalks. See everything in that right now, and see what options are, and see what the county will allow.
Yeah, these force mains, the 6 and 12 on all three directions aren't showing its parallel in there. And if we're going to go with the design of the alternative bypass line up the FPL East Road, then I'm not so worried about the sizing and leaving those a 6 and 12. But if for some reason we would renig on that decision and that recommendation, I have real problems with 6 and 12 going underneath Gateway Boulevard. Now's the time to change it to a bigger pipe if we're ever going to do it.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, these, so what you see is, this drawing, I think was from the 60% set. Some of the utilities that we're talking about were on here, and I simply have highlighted them. But others in particular, I don't know if any, I don't believe any of the, either the force mains or the gravity were shown on there. There's definitely some updating that needs to be done to their drawings.
I went to my, I went to all my drawings, what I consider as close to as built as we've got. There is an 8-inch sanitary sewer going due west off the middle of that, almost of that roundabout, going due west, and goes down the middle of Fairway Lakes, Fairway Isles office park road. So you've got a green line going up and down the road and to the east, but you don't show the one going to the west. That's another issue.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, like I said, I mean, we've, we've got to do field work, it's part of this. And then we can look at what to do with design. I mean, the, really, the intent of this is just show the board the complexity of what we're dealing with. And this is, I mean, and this isn't even showing everything, as you're saying, and it's definitely more complex than what we're dealing with down at Commerce. So this just shows the, gives the board an idea of, of what will be improved as part of this project.
Okay, that's the only thing I had on utilities. I'm going to have some discussion with Chris after this. I've got this aerial colored photo that they gave the fire department, gave to us at the last meeting. And the more I look at this, the more I question, if somebody knows what the hell they're doing. They, they've got stuff on here that just does not exist out there. I'm wondering if anybody's ever come to the field, and this COVID got them, where they field and do any work? And if they plotted, if they plotted the right-of-way, they see that the entrance into the 711 is in a wetland. How they could do that?
I don't know. And those are definitely things that need to be worked out.
Nobody knows what the hell's going on. I think what we need is a meeting with those guys in one room to see just what they know. They sent this Sarasota stuff to us and tried to bribe us with that, and Sarasota's doing the work right. But these guys, I don't think they know what the hell they're doing.
Danny, I think you've got a couple of task orders on here.
Yeah, so if there's nothing more specific on just kind of understanding utilities, the first task authorization is the design all the way through the construction phase and the oversight to perform the engineering and the professional services to address what needs to be addressed as part of that utility relocation. So that's the task authorization 20-10. So like I said, it takes through the design permitting, bidding, and the construction phase services. Again, using that approach, that this would be done as a, a joint project agreement with Lee County like Commerce was. So that would be a whole separate thing that we would need to work out with legal like we did on Commerce on the, the joint project agreement. So that's the first one that's on here. If you guys have any questions on that.
Chris, go ahead and go down the line, see if there's questions.
Sure, Supervisor Flaherty.
Yes, so underneath on the agenda page 20, you have construction observation. What does that entail?
What does it entail?
Yes, what does it entail?
Construction observation, that's where we'll have, I mean, if you want me to read it, I can, but that's where we'll have somebody out there part-time, basically, watching the utility portion of the project.
Walking around.
Say again?
Are they going to be sitting in a truck, or are they going to be walking around?
They're going to be at the, the intersection, they'll, they'll be, I mean, in their truck, they'll be out, depends on what they're actually doing. But they'll be in their truck writing reports at times, they'll be out, you know, doing inspection.
Well, if you're observing, you should be out, rather than in the truck doing reports.
Okay.
I'm just making that statement. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Supervisor Guy?
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at the time and schedule of performance, and it appears that in order to, this professional services is going to take a year. And I couldn't help but wonder, when this work's all done, and the actual work of turning the dirt starts, how long is this thing going to take?
I'm not sure, and I, you know, I use my best guesstimate on this. So what I can tell you for sure is that the county, first of all, is asking for our design to be complete by around the 5th of October, which puts us at about, what are we at, August, September, October, to about two months. And, you know, we're projecting 90 days to have bid documents prepared, and then permitting another 30 days after that. So they're looking at October, they actually had a schedule, and Chris, I don't have it up, and they had a schedule of what they're looking to do. So, I mean, I would imagine probably sometime in the January, February, March timeframe, they intend to start performing work. And what I did was estimate the time that it would take to perform the work. Utility is going to be one of the first things that's done, because they've got to relocate those utilities to be able to perform the, the road base and the rest of the construction associated with the roadway. So I don't think it'll actually take 240 days total for the utility work. And I can try to pull up their schedule and see what they're projecting for the roadway. But since we haven't been, you know, involved with the design to this point, I don't really know for sure.
Danny, they had a drawing or something I saw just recently that came out, I think from Cecil. The plans, final plans of the DOT are supposed to be done 1/21/21.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing. I pulled that up now, and that's when they showed the final plans. I'm not sure of what they're anticipated. So if they're done 1/21, one of 21, you know, you're looking at a couple of months to bid the project. So they would probably be starting construction somewhere around April.
Yeah.
And however long their, their timeframe goes for construction, something that large, it's probably close to a year. I don't know, I would be.
We're going to have this big intersection closed for a long time.
I, I haven't seen their, I haven't looked at their plans, but they generally have a phasing where they, they rotate around as they go, so they're able to keep traffic moving. They'll close down a part of it and reroute traffic. But you're right, the, the intersection will be impacted for whatever the duration of that construction period.
Thank you.
Okay, question, Supervisor Banks?
Yeah, hey Danny, in looking at the recently kind of completed roundabout, I mean, that one seems to be fairly straightforward. And Chris, have we heard any, any feedback from the residents so far? And now, I understand that there's a whole different level of complexity when we're talking about the Griffin Drive roundabout versus the, 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 the much larger one that's coming through. But have we heard any, any feedback from residents on that thus far?
We haven't, have not gotten any inquiries since the presentation by Commissioner Pendlergrass and the staff.
Yeah, and, and no feedback is from residents on the recently completed one on Griffin Drive?
On the school? No, I haven't heard any comments.
Yeah.
We've heard a lower heart next to it.
What is that?
Supervisor Flaherty and Supervisor Tinkle said they both heard.
Very negative comments.
On the one on Griffin?
Yes.
What, what's, what's negative about that one?
One of all, one person was a guy that was marking it, I don't know what he was doing, but he painted an arrow that turns you right into the headway traffic coming the other direction. The other one is, it's just simply too damn small of a rock of a radius. And you, you can't get two vehicles through that thing if you had to.
Well, is that, that's just the one way.
It, it will be when you exit that school and those people coming out trying to merge left with the vehicles coming from 80. Lots of luck.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious if we'd, if we'd heard anything.
I, I also, they have the speed limit of 30. You can't go 30 on that. You better go down at least 12 to 15. And that's what I've heard. And actually I do remember it. Yeah, if you go on it and it's true, you have to do 12 or 15. It's not made for 30.
Yeah, that's it for me, thanks.
Okay, questions? Supervisor Pineberg?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Tinkle, any other questions or comments?
Danny, the only one I had is that we've, just go back about three pages. You know, in your proposal, I brought it up earlier, I just want to make sure you're all on the same page. There is a six and a 12 inch force main, not just a single 12. But it's going to be a little bit more complicated. Keep an eye on this about another page.
It's, it won't impact our design because it's all going to be on the same sheet. So, I mean, I, I don't think I need to update this. We don't know for sure until we get out there and, and, and do that investigation. I put what I knew at the time.
You're a 12 inch waste water force main extends east and west, south side of Griffin. That's, it, it's a six and a 12 that comes down Gateway Boulevard in both directions, north to south, and then across where there's a six and 12. I, I don't see the need to change anything. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of.
Okay.
Other than that, I, I didn't have anything.
So we need a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Motion second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. I'll call the roll for the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
No, I think it's too expensive.
Supervisor Guy?
Reservations, yes.
Okay Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Pineberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed as four to one for the task order.
Okay, the second item, the second and third task authorizations, and I'll go through them one by one, are associated with the facilities plan that was prepared for the capital improvements. And previously Chris had submitted a request for inclusion to D E P for three of three items. One for the irrigation main within the FPL easement. One for the wastewater force main, which would extend through the F P and L easement to the existing plant. And then the third for the, the next Hawthorne well, which has already been permitted through the Water Management District. So what I did is I took the irrigation main and the wastewater force main, since they would follow within the same area for a good part of that route, I combined those into one project from our side, which, which makes that, makes that easier for us and helps lower the cost. So essentially that is extending approximately 9,000 linear feet of, of a 12 inch irrigation main from Griffin Drive through the F P and L easement to near the entrance of Stony Brook, connecting into the existing irrigation line on, on Gateway Boulevard. And then extending approximately 7,350 feet of 12 inch force main and 1,230 feet of 20 inch force main, basically from the plant moving through the F P and L easement out to Gateway Boulevard near Hidden Lake Drive. So this essentially is for the preliminary services, which is design, surveying, geotechnical permitting. And then we included the bidding phase services. So this does not include the construction phase services because those have not been presented to, to D E P yet. So that's the first of the, of the two associated with the facilities plan and D E P S R F.
Chris, ask for questions, please.
And for the first two projects for the task order, questions Supervisor Flaherty?
I have a question. You said you have a firm already named on page, at the page 33, okay? As a sub-council. Is this customary or aren't you supposed to go out to bid for?
Where are you? I, I don't know what page 33 is, what?
You can see Artiman Associates.
Geotechnical and Artiman Associates. I'm just.
What is the question?
Okay, you have them listed already as a sub-council? And I'm wondering if it's supposed to be going out to bid or it's just, that's just the way it is.
Oh, you, you don't bid engineering services, one and two, Artiman's owned by Tetra Tech.
Okay, that's what I need you to know. Thank you.
Okay, questions Supervisor Guy?
Thank you. Danny, you need to convince me that this work needs to be done at this time. We have a virus going on in this state and country. And you're going to get us on a road that we're not going to be able to back off on if we're not careful. And I'm thinking specifically about the F P L easement to assist with wet weather discharge, which amounts to a million dollar boondoggle that somebody's come up with so we don't have to water the bass during the summer. I'm, I, I think we're going too far, too fast on this thing. And you need, you need to convince me otherwise.
Okay, so a couple of comments. One, don't, don't confuse it with the F P and L wet weather. This will provide the backbone for that. But what this does is it alleviates your, your pressure. You've got homes that are being built, you know, out towards Gateway and finishing up that Pelican area that when the hydraulic modeling was done, is putting a tremendous load on your system, both for irrigation and for your, and for your force main, for your wastewater. So you're having trouble right now keeping up with the force main on flows getting to the plant. And then on the opposite side, you're already seeing issues with, with pressures in that north side and be able, being able to deliver irrigation to those communities. So this doesn't really have anything to do at this point with providing wet weather to benefit within that F P and L easement. It's, it's really alleviating your pressure issues that you're, you're having. And I could pull up the dates of what we had modeled. And previously we had brought the hydraulic models for both irrigation and wastewater to the board. But as we approach build out with these communities, we're having significant issues. And that's what these, that's what these pipes do. And, and then the other part of that is this is solely for the design phase, which, you know, can be funded through that S R F program. You know, once the design is done, the board can make a decision on how fast you want to move forward with the construction. But this gets you to that point where you're ready to, you're ready to do that. I would just caution the board on waiting too long because you're going to, you're going to experience and you're already experiencing issues on, on pressures on both, on both faces.
You remember convincing me four or five years ago that we had plenty of pressure to handle all of the new construction in Pelican?
At the time we, we did. Of course, the designs have, have changed quite a bit and, and flow projections have changed. And what your existing demands are have changed. So there have been a lot of, a lot of changes since that time, which have, which have resulted in, in this, this need.
And it's just going to take care of all of the needs in that area?
This will provide the, the flow and pressure that you need within the pipeline. You're still, you're still going to have supply issues, at least for now, on the irrigation side, which get, will get us to the, the next proposal. And then you've got some outside flow assistance that will help with that on long term. But you're still going to have some issues as far as the, the supply goes. You know, there was another project that was recommended that included installing a storage tank within the system as well, that would help with, that would help with flow and pressure. So that's still something that should be considered. So I won't say this will take care of your problems, but it'll help tremendously.
If you're, if you're banking on getting a bunch of money through the state, at this point in time, I think you're going to be sadly mistaken.
The S R F program?
Yes.
I, I don't know where they sit dollar wise, but you, I don't, that may, on the construction side, you know, possibly for what we're talking about on the design side, I don't think there's issues there. But I, I'm not sure sending funding wise.
I wouldn't argue with you, but, but when the governor is ready to fundate his favorite increase in teacher salaries, everything else is on the table up there tally.
Mr. Guy, yeah, Danny, if I may jump in, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, my, or Chris, my understanding is that none of this work will proceed until such time as we have a loan agreement and a funding agreement with the D E P under that program. Is that correct, Chris and Danny?
That's correct.
You know, we can approve, the board can approve the task orders right now, but it would be my recommendation that we wait till we get all approval from the D E P at their funding meeting in November. I've talked to their staff in the last week and we have been approved for the design funds of these, these three projects. So it's the formality and they do have the money at the moment. However, they cautioned with the construction of these projects and also further construction beyond seven lakes that are approved for funding right now, that at the moment, they don't have any money to allocate. And it's really more a timing issue based on last year when they went to a zero interest rate. They had hundreds of millions of dollars in loans that went out on projects that are 18 to 24 months to complete, some longer. So until they started getting repayment from those loans, they do not have any funds to allocate. And they said that maybe the middle or late next year till they actually do. So they told me why it's just been approved and agreements sent out for construction money for the lake bank program that after this, and right now they're not making any promises. So the design money is safe, but I would still wait until it was approved and make these task order approvals contingent on that.
Yeah, I think what we could do is just say the funding of this task authorization, any payments is subject to funding by the state F D E P under the S R F program.
They executed agreement for that funding and that's what would, would come next, you know, from them.
Well, if we approve this, may I assume that going to take another vote of the board before we move ahead with actual construction of these items?
There, there would be a vote before there would be the actual construction because that would be a separate loan application. And right now we would have another agreement that it would have to come to the board to approve the funding for the design base of all three of these projects. That would have to be part of the motion to, if you approve the task order today, that would be allowing the firm to move forward with that work once that task order signed.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Questions Supervisor Banks?
No.
Okay Supervisor Pineberg, questions?
Yes, I have a couple and that is we're using the F P L easement and we, we have permission to use that to do this construction from F P L?
No, that would, we do not at this time and we're, would have to get an easement agreement in place with F P L and also the fee stipulator owner of the easement.
That's Tony's question, where we're at on the transfer of the F P L easement to us.
Unfortunately, not any further. I've had conversations with Charles, but other topics, but not this one. But this is going to come to the top of the list, so. We've had conversations in the past with F P L about easements and it's been interesting with regards to running utility line. So I'll, I'll follow up with Charles, see if we can get that hold harmless.
Yeah, because this, this whole deal is only good if we can use that F P L because we're trying to connect two points here and the shortest distance is the F P L easement.
And I had, I have one other question. And that is if we, what effect will this work have on what you're trying to do at the Griffin Drive Roundabout, if any?
None.
None, okay. Those were my questions.
And I'll also mention too, that at the end of August, early September, we'll have a rate study done and the S S R F funding would be repaid principal interest. Our prize fund, the rate study is showing the impact to the utility rate for each one of these projects. Not only the design phase, but the construction phase, how it would impact the rate. Supervisor Tinkle?
No comments.
Okay Supervisor Flaherty, you have another question?
I do. We don't have the easement from that, beyond that area. Should we wait until we get?
I would say no, because at some point in time, you need to, if we don't have the fee stipulator, if we need an easement, we're need, going to need to know the route.
Okay.
And we're going to have to have dimensions and sketches and legos for the route.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve. Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll, I'll second it only if the motion includes the stipulation on funding that Tony had recommended. That this, that we're approving.
I'll amend it to approve it through the design base and hold issuing anything to proceed with any construction related services until one, we know that funding is available and two, that there's a vote of approval.
And is that good enough or are we waiting the divi, design phase until we know that there's funding?
I think, I think, although Chris is confident, we're confident that we're going to have the design fund. We won't know that until what, September, October, Chris, to get the loan agreement?
You know, when they had, when they do the final approval, then they would send us the loan agreement.
So I guess it would be contingent upon execution of the loan agreement with D E P.
That's what I'd like for the motion to stay.
That's fine.
Then we have a.
How the second of that?
And a second, I'll go ahead and call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty? Yes Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Pineberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes five oh for the task order for the design work. Contention on the F D E P agreement for funding.
Okay, the next one, similar, is for the lower Hawthorne well, P W seven. This has been permitted, gosh, for a number of years through the Water Management District. Basically provides you additional supply and kind of the same thing. This has been, this is one of those projects that was approved through the facilities plan. plan. It's gone through the request for inclusions, um, and I would assume would, you know, would, should the board approve it, would follow those same stipulations with the loan agreement.
And this is one of those, uh, three projects that were included in the facilities plan and that we submitted to, uh, FDIP and they approved for design funding.
Motion to approve it. There's no questions.
Okay, I want to go through with questions. Supervisor Flaherty, questions?
No.
Supervisor Guy, questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Supervisor Banks?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Pineberg?
No.
And I'll second the motion.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yeah, I just want, one thing, uh, is critical to this day. Are you aware of any attempts or any talk going around that the county is going to try to come back and get the water out of that wastewater treatment plant and re-distribute it before 2030?
I have not heard anything on that. I, I don't know what discussions they've had with, uh, you know, the developer of, uh, our neighbor. I don't know if they've had any discussions with that. I really don't know.
I just heard some rumors going around that, uh, on the table again, that, uh, that little nest thing we have out there wants to be taken away from us. And if that's the case, this thing's going to be more important than ever to have. But, uh, other than that, uh, ready to vote?
Okay. We've got a motion.
I just want, sorry, I just want clarification that this motion also includes that it's contingent upon receiving funding.
Hi, Brian.
We have amended motion and a second, call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Pineberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Or task order twenty twenty dash twelve amended contingent on, uh, board accepting the funding agreement with the DEP.
Okay, the, uh, next item on there is, uh, actually the recommendation of award for the Commerce Lake's roundabout. Um, if you remember previously in June, um, Lee County received bids. There were actually, um, uh, four bidders. And, uh, we of course are interested in the utility portion, although, uh, you can't break out the utility separate from, um, the rest of the, the work. So, um, Wright Construction, uh, Community Asphalt, PMI, which is Preferred Materials Inc., and Ajax were the four bidders. So for the utility portion, um, as you can see, Wright's was the low, um, at $732,000. Communities was $824,000, five hundred and eighty, and then, um, and then went down from there. Um, our estimate was 610,000, so the low bid was about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-two or so thousand, um, above what our estimate was. We had talked about that previously. Um, I believe the road bids were higher too, and, uh, what it appeared is, there was, you know, the concern with MO, uh, maintenance of traffic, some of those items, which drove up the cost. What I will say is, is when you do these joint project agreements, um, you do them because it's, it's, um, it helps out both parties. You've got one contractor, you don't have any finger pointing, all of it's done, um, gelled as, as one project and you simply just, you know, write the check to, um, in this case, you know, Lee County then pays the contractor for that portion. Um, you're not having to get in advance and then somebody coming in and messing up your work that was done and that sort of thing. The downside to it is you're at risk as to, um, who gets the, the project. You, just because the low bidder of the overall road work may be the, the low bidder, utility of that may not be the low bidder. In this case, we're very fortunate because the, um, low bidder of the overall project, which is Wright Construction, was also the low bidder of the utility work. So we were, um, very fortunate there. Um, we went through back and forth with, um, getting references, talking on the phone with Wright Construction. Um, at the end of the day, we feel very comfortable with, uh, with the company and with their, uh, with their contractor, which is KBJ Development Services, Inc., um, who has also owned or they share the ownership of, of Wright, right? Right, the owners of Wright and the owners of KBG are one and the same. So we feel good that, um, you've essentially got one unit there that's, that's doing the work. So with that, um, I don't know if you have any questions, but ultimately, um, Lee County is, has this on their agenda for, I believe I have it in there, is August twentieth or somewhere in there. It's in August, so it's coming up very quickly to, uh, to make a war. Though I don't know if we, I assume we'd need a motion, Chris, to accept the recommendation?
Let me go down the line with the questions. Supervisor Flaherty, any questions? Supervisor Guy, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Danny, uh, as I've read this, uh, memo over three times, uh, it's, it seems to me that you're telling us that there are three portions or three parts to this job. The Lee County work, the utility relocation portion, and then the underground work. Do I have that right?
No, it's essentially the, the two parts. The underground work and the utility work are one in the, the same. Why, when I'm meaning the utility work, I'm referring to the underground work that is ours there. I don't know if there's, there may be private parties that have to move some, some items like FP and L. I don't know. I don't believe so, but I don't know for sure. But when I was meaning utility, I was referring to the underground.
Oh, well, you call it the utility portion and then you call it the underground utility and other parts. So I thought there were two, two separate ones. Okay, so there's just, there are just two, the Lee County work and the utility, uh, relocation portion that's our, our part. Is that so?
Yes.
And, uh, Lee County is going to recommend Wright Construction for their portion also later this week?
I think it's in a, in a couple of weeks. Yes.
Oh, it's later this month, I meant. I'm sorry.
Later this month. Yes.
Oh. Well, I don't know anything about Wright Construction, but, uh, seems to me that we've been very fortunate in getting the, getting the same company to do the whole darn thing. That's, uh, that's hardly ever happened.
We are, and, and I will say Wright Construction is a well-respected, um, contractor in this area. They've, they've been here a number of years. They've, uh, they've done a lot of work, um, in Lee County and for Lee County. So yeah, I will agree, we're, we are fortunate that, um, we have a good contractor and that, um, their arm doing the underground is one in the same. So I think we're fortunate.
Uh, thank you very much. That's it.
Any questions? Supervisor Banks?
Yeah, no questions for me. Thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Pineberg?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Tinkle, questions?
Yeah, Danny, uh, you said, I was here in this room about a year ago and, uh, the county sat here and told us that the intent on the Commerce Lake project was to start construction in April of this year with the intent of working through the summer and avoiding the school deal. What happened?
What happened there? I, I.
Just our off schedule is not even funny.
Yeah, I, I don't know exactly. I will say that, you know, originally the, uh, the project, uh, was to bid, I believe, in, uh, April, uh, with, you know, most recently. And I'm not sure what their original schedule was a year ago versus that, but it was pushed back, oh, um, gosh, a month and a half or more maybe, largely because of, um, you know, the, the COVID issue that we're having from what I understand. So that pushed the bids back to June fifth. And, um, you know, and now we've been working on this award phase. So, um, yes, there, I understand they're behind schedule. I'm not sure how they intend to address, you know, construction related to the school timing, but, um, here's where we're at now.
Did you have any opportunity to utilize the bid, uh, unit prices from Commerce to revise your projections for Commerce Lakes? I'm sorry, for Griffin, would one point two be one point six?
I have not and we will, and I have a feel, yeah, we'll, we'll bring that back. But, you know, we, we knew that, we know that Griffin will be much higher. Um, we're not sure where that'll be, but I'll, we can use those numbers for sure. And, um, problem is, you know, we've got much larger pipe on a lot of, a lot of Griffin than we had on, um, Palmer, so we'll have to do some interpolation.
That's what concerned me. Uh, that's all I have. Motion to approve.
Here we have a motion in a second to approve the recommendation of Wright Construction. We'll call the votes. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Pineberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Motion passed as five zero to recommend Wright Construction for the roundabout, the OBC location work. And that, um, literature will also be included in the rate study on how that is going to impact the water and sewer and irrigation rates.
Now, when we're doing that, we're taking that bid price plus all of our non-construction costs added to get the total price.
All in.
All in.
All right, the, um, I've got two items left, so try to be quick. Um, the next item is really for informational purposes. If you have any questions, just, you know, let me know. Um, Supervisor Flaherty, at the last meeting, had asked about density reports for Lake Eighty-three, so that's essentially what you'll see is this item. We've provided the density reports. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Sure. Questions? Supervisor Flaherty?
The date of this test is on April eighth. However, the date it was used was two months later. Would that make a difference?
I would, it would only get more compacted after that, earth, earth and cavity of, of still work.
I guess what my most concern was. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Supervisor Guy, any questions on the density reports?
No questions.
Okay. Supervisor Banks, any questions?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Pineberg?
No.
Supervisor Tinkle, any questions?
I just want to thank you for putting it in.
The, uh, next is just the, um, you know, quick update on the, um, different projects that we have, uh, going on. Um, back one more, yes. You can skip right over. I don't, I don't mind. It'd be, yeah, I think it's in there. There we go. Yeah, there you go. Um, yeah, I can go through these real quick, or if you've had a chance to look at them, if you have any questions, either, either way, just let me, if you want me to go through them or.
No questions.
Chris, go ahead and ask down the line.
There certainly questions on the engineer status reports. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes, um, with the high school, where are you exactly with the inspection? Kind of know they're continuing to build, so where are you with your inspections?
I, I really can't tell you. I mean, as, as they do work that's associated with utilities, we're out there. Uh, we may be complete. I'm not, I'm not sure. I, in fact, I would imagine at this point we probably are.
Okay, because there's, it says that it's continuous, so I've got an idea where you were.
Yeah, we just coordinate with, uh, with Johnson and Suffolk, but I would have to talk to our individuals directly involved. But I, I would imagine at this point, we're, we're probably near done since they're highly into the vertical portion of the job.
And, and about Lake Eighty-three, where are we?
Uh, Tyler actually went out today and did a walkthrough and developed a punch list. Uh, I believe there's a change order item on the agenda later, um, later today. But that, all of that additional work that the board approves, um, has been completed and the punch list has been developed.
Okay. So did, um, Brian go around the room to look at this? I'm just curious.
Um, they were to meet out there at one. Um, they weren't there at one. Tyler walked it himself. They alive, arrived later, um, just as Tyler was wrapping up. And I don't know if they walked it afterwards or not. Basically his list of punch list items for them to look at.
Showed up twelve forty-five, walked it, and Tyler left.
Oh, 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 can Brian come to the, or Flavia? Does that, can you answer my question then?
Walked the schedule for one o'clock. We showed up at twelve forty-five. Tyler said the area walked it. We commenced at one o'clock to walk it. Tyler left. His inspector didn't walk it with us.
Thank you.
Neither here nor there, but I understand that they showed one fifteen, but again, neither here nor there.
Yeah, no, we're there at like a twelve fifteen. Thank you.
Okay. Questions on the engineer schedule? Supervisor Guy, any questions?
No questions.
Supervisor Banks?
No.
Supervisor Pineberg?
I have just one, and that is on the, the three lakes that we could not complete this year. In the fall or winter of this year, are those ready to go as soon as, as soon as, um, the water levels drop? Those are ready to start?
Yeah, they're, they're ready to go. We would essentially have to just reissue a notice to proceed for those lakes, um, to move forward.
Okay, now, I just wanted to know them.
Supervisor? Oh, sorry. Supervisor Guy?
I was just gonna, how are the water levels gonna drop when we're eleven inches below normal rainfall?
We're at control elevation right now.
Say again?
We're at control elevation in all the pond now. In fact, we're about an inch over.
The water is up.
When they say that that water level is down, that is so, or the water quantity is down, rainfall is down, that is so deceiving, it is unbelievable. As you know, you can live on the west side of the road here and the east side gets two inches, you get, uh, it, it, it's meaningless.
And.
Did you, did you, did you have any questions?
Did you say deceiving? Is that what you said?
Deceiving. Uh, yeah, I had two cat questions. Danny, uh, where do you think is out on the reranking of the phase three ponds, uh, to possibly merge into phase two?
We, we need to get with, um, with gateway staff and, and go out and look at some of these. I, I got an email last week, I believe, of one of the lakes near Griffin and Timber. And it's one that wasn't, you know, I don't believe was on there previously. So, um, we just need to get with staff and, and go out and relook at them. That hasn't been set up yet, but, uh, we'll get that.
We need to get that done because that could, uh, be impactful on the facilities plan the next time, which ones go and which ones don't. Uh, have you heard anything from the, uh, people that are doing Arborwood Phase Three? Those, uh, their site at the bank on the main pond that borders the golf course is getting pretty shaggy and it looks like no maintenance is being performed whatsoever over there. And relative to their two internal ponds, I've not been over there to see what's going on, but I haven't even looked and never see a warm body over there. What's, what's going on with Arborwood Phase Three?
I'm not sure. Um, Chris, do you know?
We had a phone conversation with them two weeks ago that Tony was in on and there were several.
I think Stephen was, right?
Yeah, Stephen was also on that conversation. There were several items they more had to, uh, to do with road turnover. And, uh, there was something we needed to bring to the board because they, uh, originally asked that their HOA take maintenance responsibility of the ponds. And, uh, during that phone conversation, we mentioned that going to the board and they said that they would do whichever way it could be expedited. So they kind of dropped off that request.
Wait a minute, they, I thought the ownership of the two ponds were ours.
They are, and they were, wanted to see if their HOA could take the maintenance and operation responsibility for. They are. They were, wanted to see if their HOA could take the maintenance and operation responsibility for it. We said they were in our permit, and assuming we can change that, where's the big sign to let them out? Tony, you want to comment on that?
I think the staff recommendation to the board, we had a memo, and I didn't see it in the agenda book, I thought maybe it's on the 20th, was to get some board direction as to whether or not you have the ponds or lakes operated and maintained by the HOA. I think the consensus of the staff was to recommend that the district operate and maintain those ponds or lakes.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, why they want to do it? They gotta pay the money. It's crazy. Maybe they thought they were gonna be out of the CDB.
Yeah, I don't know. In fact, uh, yeah, and I'm sorry, I thought the item was gonna be in the agenda, there's a memo. We make sure it's on the August 20th memo, uh, kind of package.
Well, somebody needs to from staff be, well, look at that pond, the pond that's active against the golf course, and look at it from the perspective of the other side. It's not being maintained at all by anything.
Well, I guess, okay, but I guess my, my, my reason I'm puzzled is they don't have the plat- pond life for Arborwood Phase 3.
I'm, I'm not talking about the two that are interior, Tony. I'm talking about the one that exists, which is on the east side of their property.
Oh, okay, because I guess.
It's existing pond.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, is that the one that's a bit dependent on?
Yes, that's, that's totally floating all over the place.
Oh.
Yeah, they just, they ignored the pond that's abiding the golf course totally. There's no, no maintenance whatsoever of it.
Yeah, Chris or Brian, Danny, if you could all send me an aerial of that pond we're talking about from the legal description.
Any other questions?
No, no other questions.
Danny, I just had one question on the update. We had a July action date for 60% plans. Do you know where you're at with those? For the Phase 2?
Yes, I, I do. Their CAD is, CAD is working diligently every day on them. I'm not sure what, what's taken so long, but they are, they're not being ignored. They're, they're, they're diligently being worked on every day by, by our CAD. So I did a revised estimate to, to complete those, and I'll, I'll email you and let you know for sure.
Appreciate that.
Yep, yes, sir. That's all I have on the agenda, guys. I'll, I'll stick around. I'm actually gonna exit the computer, and I'm gonna call back in. So when you see somebody calling back in, Chris, it's me.
Okay.
Thank you, Danny.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Flaherty had another question.
Mr. Nelson, are you still there?
I think he's in transit.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. The punch list for 83, are you going to have Tyler get a hold of Brian and kind of talk about it? So.
I assume he's gonna write something up officially. I think he gave a list of items to them in the field today. But I'll get, I'll have him get with Brian.
Yeah, so that we're on the same page with both Brian and Tyler?
Will do.
All right, thank you.
And we're ready to move into the next phase of the meeting. Item C, District Management Reports, and we were gonna start that with Laura LaRoya, our Business Manager. And we, we had some proposals for budget reductions moving into August 20th public hearing. And I also wanted to mention, we secured a room at the Gateway Trinity Church that will set up a reading site. So if we have an extra crowd or overflow crowd, we'll have a large screen TV and a monitor in there, and a podium for public comment, and it will be air conditioned and available. So we'll publicize that in the next board book and on the website because we have such limited space here. But over there, they've offered to allow us to use their facility. And with that, I'll turn it over to Laura.
Yeah, it was a memo, I think. No, this, this item was not in the board book. This was part of my management report that got added on after this was sent out. So you're not gonna see it in there. My apologies. All right, um, at the July 16th meeting, there was discussion about a way to reduce the, to reduce the, the budget by approximately $360,000. There were some changes that were made. Stephen Boom made some changes to the summary for the budget, and they're reflected on the spreadsheet that's on your screen right now. On the left-hand side, that first chart there with the, the total variance of 371,000, that's without the proposed use of reserves. And if you look over at the one on the right, the one on the left ends up, has us ending with a 2.2% variance, an increase by 2.2% overall. Where the one on the right, if we go and we use reserves to help fund some of those costs where we had the shortfalls, we end up at a 0.5% increase, so a half a percent. And then the, the part on the bottom underneath the summary is the items that were discussed, and the dollar amounts for each of those things that we had removed from the budget.
Hey Laura, can you make this just a little bigger? Can you just, just plus it, yeah?
Yeah, and Doug, you might be able to expand it on your screen. I know I can do that on my iPad. I can make the display larger.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Tony.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tinkle, you have a question?
Yes. Don't wanna be deviating, but this is not reducing the budget. All we're doing is subsidizing it from an account. It's still our same budget, correct? We haven't changed anything. What we've done is we've robbed from something else for our reserves to offset the cost.
Correct.
I'm not opposed to that. I was just saying, I wanna make sure people understand we're not reserving.
No, nothing has been reduced. If you look at the, the amounts that are highlighted, and yeah, all of those are the same budget amounts. It is, like, the expenses in here are the same as here. So that, that hasn't changed. What changes is the net because of the use of reserves.
I'm just very, very concerned with what we've experienced in the last two weeks in at least our community. That cutting these costs, I understand COVID, I understand all that other stuff, but the world goes on. We, we spent $50,000 correcting a stake that this board made 10 years ago, and that 50,000 is going to repeat itself numerous times going forward. We can't continue to cut. We just can't do it. First time we had a house burned down because fire hydrant doesn't work, because valves don't work, because this board set on its butt. Somebody's gonna catch it, and I will not be a party to a board that allows that crap to go on. You just can't, you were, we're running a utility. We cannot cut costs when it's jeopardizing the lives of the rest. I get off of soap.
I, I completely agree with you, so.
And Mr. Tinkle, you'll hear more about those valve expenses in the meeting on the 20th because Kenny has Phase 2. That going, and when people are asking us why we're replacing valves, and we mentioned, well, because we have to replace fire hydrants and their length. And one thing you will see is when we bring that rate study forward, is when you're talking about robbing Peter to pay Paul or moving money around, you will see a resulting increase in the utility rates from these projects and also from those transfers.
As I stood out there as a sidewalk superintendent the last three days, I've had residents asking me, what is wrong with this board that allowed us to get in this position? And I said, it's real easy. It's when you kick the can down the road, and you don't have people to know what the hell they're doing on the board. And that's what happened here. And unfortunately, the, the cows are coming home. We're gonna have problems for the next two, three, four years fixing all these valves that do not work. And unless you just wanna shut down and tell everybody, go get a canteen used for water, you're gonna be shutting down large portions of this system. People were madder than hell over at Gateway Greens that they've been on boil water notice for four days. Madam hell, especially when it was caused by stupidity.
Laura, just a quick question. When, where it says reserves and other, is this pulled from existing reserves? Or is this also part of carryover?
That actually, Stephen, if you could answer that, I just reproduced the charts that he sent.
Okay, and Stephen, you on?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just curious if this is like, is this net reserves? Or is it also incorporating 2020 carryover surplus?
Um, when we do this, it's strictly coming from reserves because you don't know what your carryforward is gonna be from this year yet. So I just take it from your outstanding reserves. And then the, the second part to your question, of the 350,000 that you're looking at there, 200,000 would be coming from cash reserves, and the hun- the other 150 would be coming from an additional revenue source that the utility fund would generate. So you'll really only be using 200,000 of your cash reserves. And the whole idea of the two charts that Laura is showing you is just to kind of give you a feel, you know, going into the budget. If you wanted to, I mean, obviously, the budget can work with or without it. But that, that was kind of the purpose of it. And then I think the last piece I'll just cover real quickly is of the, and this is really more for Mr. Tinkle's question. Of the 339,000, there are a couple lines in there that are truly reducing the budget, that are not just using reserves. So it's minimal. I mean, it is, it is a small part of that, but there are a couple, just in case anyone asks.
And Stephen, one, one other quick question from a, from your position as our, you know, our CPA, accounting, finance consultant, subject matter expert, whatever. Would you say that this approach is physically responsible for us at this time in order to continue to, to accomplish 2021 priorities under the current environment?
I think, yeah, I, I think the only thing what I, what I can say on it is with the reserves, you're kind of trying to get to the middle ground of making sure you do, you know, the majority of, of the, of the good work that the, the district staff and everyone knows needs to get done, but also trying to, you know, keep the balance with the assessments, thinking that probably you will have at least $200,000 coming out of your carryforward for this year. So that's, that's kind of the thought. I mean, in, in a perfect world, you would not have to use any cash reserves. If you are, you wanna keep it to a minimal level, and, you know, that's kind of what the $200,000 represents. I don't think anybody would recommend, you know, going above that just because you don't know what's gonna happen. And every year, something, you know, unique and different does happen.
Yeah, and, and I will add, and I don't know the number, maybe you can call it out here, but I think it is, it's important for us to call out. At least as long as I've been on the board, I think at the end of every fiscal year, we've had carryover dollars. Was, was that accurate? So that would be what I'll have to go on this, three, three years, four years, something?
I, I'm not sure. I would say every year. Certainly the last couple of years you have. And a lot of that is just, just a matter maybe of other, of open positions throughout the year, or because of open positions and, and limited resources, maybe staff has not gotten to all the projects that they, they absolutely feel they need to. So I, I don't know that it, it is a matter of, you know, hey, every year, there's just been a great deal of money. I think it's been a combination of things that you can't necessarily count on every year. Or, you know, again, you just don't know what's gonna happen and, and other projects that are gonna pop up. But, you know, I think it's reasonable to assume you would have a 200,000 carryover from this year, so you wouldn't actually be using any cash reserves, but I won't have a definitive answer for a couple more months.
Yeah, and I, I didn't mean that statement as a, as a, as a negative.
Oh, no, no, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question too for Mr. Boom. Is that okay?
Go ahead.
If we use 200,000 from the reserves, what does that leave in the reserves?
Uh, I can't give you that answer 100% yet because, again, I, I don't know where the end of this year is going to wind up. I, when I do this, I'm really more looking of, of where you are right now and, and saying, I don't wanna use cash reserves. What's my carryforward gonna look like so I don't have to? And that's kind of where the 200,000 comes from. But I, I will be able to, in, in at least probably one more month, be able to give you a better answer on that.
Okay. You don't have like an estimate of what the reserves are?
I can give you, yeah, well, I, we can give you a, a top level estimate as to where, where roughly is right now. And that's kind of, let's see what page of that, and the financials right now is 129 and 130.
So if we use the reserve, we'll just have like 1.1. That's what we're saying, right?
Correct. I'm, I'm not sure I'm, I'm really following your question. If you look, for example, on agenda 128.
I think what Catherine's trying to say is, you know, how, how much would this put, this put, does using the reserves put us at any risk with Catherine?
No, it does not. I mean, again, you, right now, your fund balance, as again, we're, we're presenting the June financials right now to you. Your fund balance for the general fund, I'm just talking general fund now, I'm getting anybody confused with anything else. It's about 3.7, almost 3.8 million dollars. Of that, there's about 700,000 that we always leave in an emergency reserve fund. So that leaves a little bit over or a little bit under 3.1 million dollars. So, you know, if you're just talking strictly cash flow, 200,000 is not gonna cause a problem. But as, as Mr. Tinkle mentioned, if you're trying to do that every year over time, that will start to, that's when you start to have some problems. And did, did I answer your question?
Not really. You didn't tell me exactly, so this, this 200,000 really is not gonna affect the reserves that we still have. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, let me, let me restate it again to be clear. Right now, your fund balance, what we would talk about in terms of cash reserves, is about 3.8 million dollars in the general fund.
Okay.
So there's different, we have that assigned to, but that's your, that's your top num- that's the number you really, when we're talking about it. So, you know, again, assuming that there's a carryforward this year, then that means your, that number is not gonna necessarily go down, but, you know, by, you know, by much. So again, even if you just estimate 3 million dollars just to kind of round it out. So 200,000 off of 3 million is not gonna cas- cause a, a short-term cash flow problem, and, and really doesn't eat too much into your reserves, so you would still be in good shape.
Okay, thank you. And how does this affect the EUs?
Uh, it, well, I'm not sure if you have the, the chart up in front. Laura, do you have that chart as well? Yeah, because I did send over a, a, a chart that shows with reserves and without reserves.
We have one more question for Mr. Boom. Is the study for, is the study for, okay?
I was hoping this, you have, you have answers on the latest adjustments that we had requested in the actual breakdown. I see a total up there. I wasn't sure if it was exactly right.
I see a total up there, I wasn't sure if it was exactly right.
Okay. Do you have a printout of this total so we can check it out? And then I want to ask you from public in the tier.
No, we made, we made two changes to the Stony Brook budget as a result of their last meeting. It was a reduction in staff expenses and a reduction in paving sidewalks and roads from $10,000 to $4,000. And both of the reductions have been made to that final budget.
And then for public preserve, there, there's somebody here?
You left.
You left, okay. I just was wondering if that was okay too.
Yep, just to answer that real quickly, I did make all those changes. And after today, I will provide both of them, you know, public preserve and Stony Brook with the, the current numbers. But any of their requests are in those numbers that you see in front of you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Boom. That's all my questions.
Okay, I want to go down the list. Mr. Guy, any questions on these reductions and proposed budget changes?
Hey, Bill, you're on mute.
My only comment is I think that you've all listened to what the board said to say. And taken into consideration the fact that we may be looking at some very lean times in the next few months and years. And I want to compliment you on a good job. Thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't easy. I think one of the things this board has tried to do is, is getting improvements done that need to get done, that need to be done. As well as also looking at improving the community overall. And I think we've done a really good job of that over the past couple of years, managing assessment increases. I think I knew, and we all knew, that it would be very challenging this go around. With assessment methodology and, and, you know, to all the things we need to get done. So great job to, to Stephen and staff in getting us to this point. Stephen, with these adjustments, if we, if you plan to go with the reserves insertion. Remind me where the assessment increase will land, is it around 9, 9%, 9, 10%?
If, if you were to keep the, with the reserves. Again, I'm just going to talk about with the reserves. And by the way, one of the reasons or how, how the 200,000 dollars, part of how it was calculated was to keep the total assessments collected for next year the same as this year. So, so let me repeat that again.
Yeah, let me, let me, well, I'll, I'll, okay, I'll let you answer. Because I think I may have blurred the water a little bit when I, I was talking about with the assessment methodology. We knew that would be a percentage increase, which is treated separately. But we've talked about them together because it's overall increase to the residents. So that's what I'm curious.
With the, yeah, I'll, I'll just go straight to that. I'm gonna give, I'll give you guys a couple of numbers here. With the reserve, meaning that you utilize $200,000 of the reserve. The, the single-family units would be going up by 7.1% or about $40. And I, $40, that's the whole annual amount. Multifamily, and this is again, we're talking about the change, because of the change in the methodology. A multifamily would actually be going down by about $150 per unit. And on average, and this is on average for commercial, they also would be going down by about $109.
I think we could sell that. Thank you, that's it for me.
Questions, comments, Supervisor Feinberg?
Not at this time.
Thanks Supervisor Tinkle?
Yeah, what's the, on the bottom, I see the two, without reserves and with reserves. But listed underneath there, I don't see if that is the information to help our day along. What, what do those numbers mean? Where does that 339, 314? I don't see that come into play because we haven't changed the budget. But those items are still in the budget because we're still 3766. I, I don't understand what that's down there for. What is, what is that telling me?
The 3766 is after all the changes. Both of these charts, the without and the with reserves, or rather that, the full 17.1 or basically 17.2 million. All of those numbers are after those changes were made. So what, what you're not seeing, I guess, the prior version.
So then what, what, what I'm missing is a column in both of those to the left. That would say initial budget, that would be 3766 plus 339?
Right, so, yes, that's correct. You're, you're, you're missing, you're missing what was shown prior. Because the prior, the approved version of the budget from June 11th, the general fund was about 3.8. So.
Well, I see 339 and I had 376, so I get to 4 real quick. I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, Steve. If this 339 came out of the budget, then how did the general fund, oh, oh, one?
No, no.
One million to be reduced to 339, you get to 3766.
So let me, let me just clear that up. The, the 339 are not dollar-for-dollar reductions of, of expenditures. Because if you go through those each items of the own, you know, like for example, number one is, because that's deleting, you know, a position. But number two and three would not delete any or would not remove any actual expenses. All you would do is fund them with reserves. So you really can't look at this as saying, okay, I should see $339,000 coming out. That's not really what it is. You, you know, the.
So the number before this change, you say was 39?
Roughly, yeah, just to round it out, 38.
And what was that as a percentage instead of 64? What was that, was that the one that was a little less than 10?
The, it was, I'm just talking general fund for a second. It was a 7.1. Before it was 7.1 was your variance from year to year, now it's 6.4. And then going back to the assessments on the approved version. That's where Mr. Banks mentioned the single-family was going up by 9%.
Yeah, okay, okay. You answered my questions, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? We'll plan on taking this and producing a final budget reflecting these cuts and bringing that to the public hearing on August 20th.
Hey Chris, I have, I'm sorry to interrupt, I have one final question. So the, in the second section where it says reduce manager salary by 10%. Are you saying this is, that this 9600 is part of reduction? And what's already been incorporated?
Yeah, we, we added that up to the 339. And when you look at deleting that position in utilities, the decrease in the salary. And the removing the irrigation zones, those were actual reductions.
Yeah, and so just, and the manager, this is, is this district manager's salary? Or is it all manager salaries, reduction about 10%?
No, it's just, it's just taking 10% off the top of, of the district manager's salary.
Okay, and is there a time period for that? Because I, I don't.
For this, it'll be for the next budget year.
I think, I thought we had a conversation about this during the last meeting that. I don't, I don't, I didn't believe that was favorable. I don't, we didn't take a vote or anything on it, but. I, I don't know if I support a, a reduction in, in a position. Without some type of duration. Now, if we're, if we're doing this from a budget perspective. For a, to really compensate for, let's say, COVID, the time period. And, and I've done that, you know, within, within my company. But there's, there's a shelf life for that. So I mean, I'd love to hear the board's take on that, because we didn't really, no, no one said anything. Are we all in favor of reducing our district manager salary by 10% for the next fiscal year?
No.
No.
Yes. I believe that other people have reduced salaries too at this time for other things. I know that there are times that all businesses are, are up or frozen.
And I understand that, but the, the point is, is that for one thing, the 10% is not going to save that much money per door in the community. And I think over the last three or four years. I guess three years. Chris has saved the district more than that in reductions and efficiencies. And I just don't feel comfortable doing that.
Yeah, and that's, that's my, that's my point is, and, and one thing, it also says that we, from a staff perspective. If we want to spend more money in other areas, that our staff is an area where we feel we can cut. So it undervalues those positions. Now, I, it, it would be different for me if we, and we did this within our organization. Our leadership took a 20% pay reduction for a certain amount of time in order to offset layoffs and furloughs within the organization. So we took a pay cut so we could keep more people on, on staff. Now, if we were doing something like that, you know, if we were in the rears and we needed to cut costs drastically. And, and that's, that was an area we were looking at. I could see getting behind maybe a temporary, you know, reduction in pay to offset the need to lay off or, you know, furlough individuals. But that's not what we're saying here. We're just fundamentally saying, hey, we're trying to save money. And I understand, Chris, I think you might have even brought this up. I, I appreciate and value the, the initiative in saying, hey, I'm a leader, I'm willing to take a cut. In order, you know, for the district to have overall reductions. I applaud that, I think it's, you know, it's very admirable. But my position is, that's not, if we need to cut 10 grand, I would find some, somewhere else we could cut 10 grand. Because I still don't think we're at fair market value in, in all of our positions. You know, COVID or not, in, in order for us to continue to grow staff, bring in quality. We're probably 10 or 20% below market in, in a lot of our positions. So I, I just said, let's find 10 grand somewhere else. I mean, help us pull another 10 grand out of reserves and let's not offset the salary piece and let's move forward. If, if the board agrees with that, that's, that's what I would do.
I'll make that move.
Agreed.
So I second. If we need to vote, we'll just do it. Steve, do we need to vote on that or are we just going to, it's just move the numbers?
Vote on the budget, so.
I, I just, I don't agree to see that in the budget. I said that the last time that this issue came up. I haven't seen anybody in Lee County, Cogum County City, Potters or anyplace else doing anything like this. So I, I'm not buying this sympathy deal at all.
Yeah, all right, so Stephen, can we just, and Laura, can you just make a note that we're just, that's not something we want to move forward with. We'll pull the 9,650 from reserves or from some other place?
Well, that, that's, it will, it'll happen when we actually finalize the budget. I just wanted to have this in front of you so that we had time to have this kind of discussion before the public hearing.
Yeah, so you just, you would just strike this.
Discussion, this is still discussion at this point.
Great.
And that's why I wanted this to happen now instead of in, at the public meeting.
Thank you.
There, and the reality is, I don't think that, that $9,600 is going to change the 0.5% much.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll move forward and get the final budget set up for August 20th. And really looking at approximately 7.1% increase on the single-family or $40 a year. So a little more than $3 a month. And with a significant reduction on the multifamily side, and we'll have that at the hearing.
Okay.
And just moving down quickly through the management items, if there's.
I'm sorry, I just want to interrupt you just once, and that is, I want kudos to staff and you and Laura for working on so hard on this budget. And getting us to a point where we can feel a little bit more comfortable in what we're going to approve. I mean, you really, you really did good work on the budget, so thank you very much.
Okay. And I'll, I'll just go through some of these management reports quickly in case anyone has some questions. But there was an update on the development at Gateway Boulevard, Griffin, and a letter of protest that we filed. Basically with the Water Management District and the copies in there. Put that together with a lot of assistance from Tony. And we'll be coming back with the utility rate study and look at the impacts of all these big projects, you know, the roundabouts, other items. We've got some big time-consuming work coming in for staff with Comcast and Hotwire. Comcast coming in and Gateway Greens and Hotwire, public and preserve, and our duty to protect our utility infrastructure. And of course, moving forward with the plans for the Griffin Roundabout. And Laura, you want to talk about a couple of the items moving forward that you've been working on to help our efficiencies and cost savings?
Sure, one of the things that I was tasked with when I took this position was to look at our PO system, which is pretty much non-existent. And I had gotten a contract and then we were working with a company called Procurefy. We had our kickoff call today and the system will definitely be in place by the time we start our fiscal year on October 1st. It should be, they said four to six weeks, so hopefully we'll actually have something in place by the middle of September. So we have a few weeks to play with it before we actually go live. Another thing that I did was I got us our own GSA letters, where we're able to keep government pricing on some of the stuff that we're buying. We've been piggybacking off the county and the city for some of those. And we have our own letter now, so we can go and get our own pricing. I've already worked with Ferguson, especially with some of those valve replacement programs or projects that are coming up. We'll be able to get some better pricing on that stuff now going forward. One small thing is, I didn't realize, we did not have a Section 125 cafeteria plan. Which is any kind of benefits and 401K or 457 are deducted pre-tax. That was not in place here, we did not have one of those. So I did that, that actually saves us and the employees money on the taxes. The Gateway website, I've been looking at the website, doing some mapping, having conversations and webinars about ADA compliance. We'll talk about it a little more later in the meeting on one of the agenda items. One of the other things I did for accounting and financial is Sonia from Infomark sends me a GL activity report every Monday. And I threw a, a report together for management so that they have an idea where we stand. On a week-by-week basis, our spending versus having to wait six weeks plus after the end of a month. So we have an idea where we're going with our spending. And then the last thing is, I have Microsoft project installed on my computer. So we'll be popping in the projects that we're going to be doing going for fiscal 2021. And I'll be able to provide updates to the board, let's say, during my report.
What any hits do we get on our website?
I will talk about that later.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a, just a quick comment, so Laura, how long have you been on board now?
Not like once.
Yeah, so great, great job so far. There's a, you know, a lot of positive momentum. And it is great having this role filled with someone that's got such a dynamic background like yourself. So that's fantastic. One thing that I'll just throw out, there's, you're, you're diving into these areas. I think it would be beneficial for us to kick the tires a little bit on either Office 365. For us to be able to leverage things like, you know, Teams, share, you know, SharePoint sites, shared documents, things of that nature. So if maybe you could put that on your red, on your radar. I, I used to be a big fan of the Google platform. However, my company's just recently switched from Google to Microsoft. And it is nice because most people use Microsoft Office platform, which makes it just so much easier as opposed to using the Google Suite. So I've, I've changed, I'm, I'm back to being a Microsoft supporter. So that's, that's something I think would be very beneficial for all of staff, as well as us as a board being able to communicate. Sorry, not communicate, be able to access documents. I was waiting for Tony to jump in.
Yeah, really.
There must be a lag on his computer, so not communicate, sorry. So not communicate, sorry, pull that back.
Thank you.
We actually do have an Office 365 subscription, and, um, depending on the role here, we all have access to different parts. And I know that we just started doing a backup, um, of all of our documents using Microsoft, which is tying into SharePoint. So that is awesome, and actually we have SharePoint experience. So, um, if we get that, I would be more than happy to work on getting that site up and running so that we can start sharing documents that way.
Yeah, so looking at maybe like an enterprise license, uh, something along those.
Some of us have that, and some of us have something that's a little less. So, um, we're actually cleaning up all the licensing right now. I'm working with, um, Junopie to clean up all the licenses that aren't actually being used by anyone because they're not cheap. So I'm trying to cut corners or cut costs wherever I can.
Yeah, I think it would be great to, uh, just when we have these meetings and we have a lot of documents, just to be able to throw something in, uh, in, uh, in a shared folder that we all have access to, um, would just make it easier than having to send out a bunch of stuff, and it's, it keeps it up to date. So anyway, not, don't spend a whole lot of time on that, but it just, put that, it sounds like it's on your radar, which is fantastic, but great, great job so far.
Thank you.
And, and I'm just going to say ditto to that. Great job. Thank, this is, thank you. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
As fast as you have to come.
Yeah.
May I ask Laura a question? Laura, I'm looking at this, uh, Section 125 cafeteria plan. Years ago when I was working, uh, employees had to take a reduction in their gross pay in order to participate in these cafeteria plans, and they got to, uh, decide how much of a reduction and, and, uh, which of the benefits, fringe benefits that they were going to use the money for. Is that substantially the way it is today?
It's a little bit different here since we actually pay for the benefits for the employees. It just, the most of the savings because of the way our benefit structure is at this time, it's for, for the employer, because we don't have to pay taxes on, um, the stuff that's coming out. The, all those premiums and things are like pre-tax, so it's saving us money. I spent a, a total of $100 to have that document drawn up, and we saved that in our first payroll. So, um, it's just going to get better from there. But there's nothing to do with, uh, salary cap or taking deductions in salary or anything like that. It's, I remember when the cafeteria plans first came out, and it's not quite the same now. And I worked real close with our new insurance broker, uh, to get that all set up and make sure that everything was kosher.
This is strictly voluntary on the employee's part?
Yes.
And, uh, it, it used to be that there was a use it or lose it provision in this thing. Is it still, is that still part of it?
You're talking about, are you talking about a FSA? Cafeteria plan is strictly meaning that the deductions come out pre-taxed. Any deductions that you have for like medical insurance, vision insurance, dental insurance, they just come out, you don't pay tax on them. So it reduces your taxable income annually.
For the premiums?
Yes. That's it. That's all that that covers. I didn't even talk about like an HSA or a PFA.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Now, I'll just touch briefly on the bill cycle memo that Leslie put together. We were planning on going back to penalties and shut offs in September unless the board has an issue. Uh, we have 20 accounts unpaid since March, um, and seven liens were recorded. Our delinquent list really isn't any different than it was at this time last year, and so far we've only had 10 residents that have submitted applications for, uh, water bill payment through the CARES Act, and that's administered through Lee County. And, uh, I'll just say a couple of things, uh. Kenny here, no?
No.
Mr. Tinkley, you saw the valve work being outdone at Gateway Greens?
Up close and personal.
Yeah, and, uh, so I think you've probably seen enough for everybody, and it's, uh, dirty and it's ugly and it's expensive, um, but it's something that has to be done. And, and really the fire hydrants are a big driver of this, and also to keep from having to shut an entire community off of water when we only have localized issues. And, uh, we really are glad to get some of those valves in before the cable job starts, um, in case something gets hit, and we hope we get the next set of valves in before they get gone. And, uh, they've still been moving forward with, uh, upgrades on the irrigation system in the back. The jockey pumps been moved, the high service pump and the controls will be installed in the next 30 days. So that'll add 2,500 gallons a minute to the capacity of our irrigation pumping system. And next up, Brian, you want to comment on any of the structure work that's been going on Callaway Greens?
Sure.
And that's, uh, that's similar to the valves, it's a significant amount of work.
September 1st, we shouldn't have something, I don't know, should we accept that? Or, I don't know.
Well, we're, you're planning on this because we don't see a, a big difference between what was happening last year at this time, the delinquent accounts, and that CARES program is still available.
Okay, thank you.
And we're referring people to that. Brian?
Uh, Callaway Greens, uh, I had a company, MRI, which is out of Norfolk Myers, come and fix our two structures, uh, 22 bucket layer cement. We have those structures fixed. One was leaking pretty much with a 42-inch pipe came into the manhole underneath the pipe. That took about 12, almost 13 buckets on that structure alone. Now that the structures are sealed, I have Enviro coming back probably in the next couple of weeks to put the plugs back in the pipes, drain them, seal our manholes back up, and fix our 42-inch pipe. So I'm hoping by the end of the month, we wrap all that up at Callaway Greens. Uh, it's been a process, but out of it, I've learned who to call, which is a good news because I find out who people go to when, you know, what hits the fan. So we have a good company now locally that can really help us out. It's MRI, they're out of Norfolk Myers. So, do you have any questions?
I, I want to, it's, I know that word comes into play, uh, again, this valve issue. Got this drawing that was in the workbook, face due, insert valve installation, hogging run north. I'm looking at this picture and I, I thought I could read planes, but I'm not getting this picture at all. I'm understanding that there is a T coming off of Gateway Boulevard on the east side of the road, that 60, yeah, 60-inch water line that goes across under Gateway Boulevard over into Bed Pine. Am I reading this correct? Are we saying that that valve off the T is inoperable or is not, is closed?
That one was closed, and they went out and, uh, opened it to see if there was any difference or anything happened, and it didn't. We, you know, we were really not sure why that valve was put in the system there.
Well, I can understand, because it's, uh, is it, it's on the, uh, line going across. Is it, it's not on the line of the main?
Right.
So it's an isolation valve?
Right.
So I can understand it happening there, but why in the hell is it turned off?
Um, we don't know, but when they turned it back on, it didn't make any, any difference in the system, and that was one of the issues. And I'd have to get Kenny to explain that a little more detail, but.
With, with the loop that we have over there, that, that doesn't really surprise me. Really does surprise me. What I did understand is the two on Bed Pine, it says at the end of Bed Pine, if the valve's closed, what is that circle? Is that, is that dead in line right there?
Yes, that is dead.
And we have a, a gate valve on that?
Yes.
Well, that would be normally turned off if it's dead in line.
Right.
What are we doing with it?
Um, right now, nothing, just the.
But then we're putting in a new cutted valve just on the other side. What's the purpose of that valve there? If the valve over on Gateway Boulevard, I'm sorry, Gateway Boulevard operates and works, that's the isolation valve. That wasn't the advantage of that other valve at all.
That, I think that had to do with the fire hydrant, but I'd have to ask Kenny for sure, Mr. Tinkley. I couldn't give you.
Okay, if that's a valve on a fire hydrant, that's a difference. Okay, okay. And then the valve over on the hogging run of Mr. Eagle Rock, yeah, Rock's property. Are they going to be doing that? I know it said they were going to do it on, uh, July 27th to 28th, but they never did do it. Or is there something holding that up? And the reason I ask, that is a critical valve that it is functional or is not functional, but is replaced, and they're starting the, what's the word? Fiber construction. If they wanted to minimize the downside of turning off have a gateway, it'd be great if that valve operated.
And I'll have to check too, but, but I'll get you a status report on that. And also wanted to mention Brian has Vanessa paving also working, saw cutting, doing curb repairs. You want to mention that real quick, because that's a significant piece of work and a big help. He got rid of Lake Commerce.
Was that messed up there on the corner?
We've done about, I'm gonna say eight or nine valley gutters. Took them out at Bonest coming here, basically report concrete back in, kind of did some patchwork on the side of the road. Commerce, we have down Gateway Boulevard, just three or four spots. I was trying to use the rest of my money that was allocated. We also restripped over on the Gateway Boulevard, because most of it's down. I got a couple of turn lanes that kind of took a little rain yesterday. We're getting some restriping done because it's all faded out around Commerce. I've got two roads left, but weather's kind of hampering some days, but we're kind of doing the best we can. We're getting there and restripping.
The valley gutter work, uh, is, is needed all over the community, uh, and we've used Vanessa also. What kind of price, most of those are eight-foot sections or 10-foot sections. What are the other one of the valley gutters? What kind of price per foot are you getting on a repair or replacement of those?
I have to check the exact numbers, but he's giving me a real good rate because I think I've spent probably 20,000 to 25,000 of those projects we've done already because he wanted his business into here. So luckily Glenn knows him, because Glenn used to work there. So he said, if you want the business, give me a good rate. I mean, I can get you the numbers down to the foot. Uh, we actually did pretty good. We did that, if you're not aware of, over on Commerce for turns to West Links, the tree was coming up through the pavement.
Yeah.
Not anymore.
I bet we have a thousand, the total linear feet in Gateway Greens, uh, valley gutter in eight-foot sections that need to be one section, two sections, three sections, torn out, re-gunned.
It, it's all down Gateway Boulevard and all the special, I hate to say it's the oak trees, but that's what it is. And we're doing them as we go. Unfortunately, I can't pave the roads, it's not my road, but we're doing fixing the shoulder as best as we can and restriping it. And we've been doing that probably for about the last month, month and a half.
Well, they even got Gateway Boulevard on the west side and especially by the park. Those are getting, those.
All that is, we've been identifying the worst ones first, going from there. I'm gonna continue to hit Bonest, they're doing a real good job for us. Great, so you'll see some improvements. Like say, if you see some of the restriping done, you go out toward a brewery, all that's been restripped.
And I'm not sure if we move into the action agenda, I have a request that we could have a five-minute break.
Hey, uh, Chris, before you, I just got a quick question for Brian. So Brian, uh, with that shoulder repair, um, you know, root calls, well, root calls of that is probably the oak roots, right? Is there anything preventative that you're doing?
We're doing the, uh, trimming the roots back as far as we can, kind of putting a root barrier into there.
Okay.
With the issues with the root barriers is it'll just keep going parallel on the root barrier until you stop it, then it's going to continue to do it.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure there was something going on and, and, I mean, you can clearly see, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. I think you guys hit the most, most severe, but, uh, I think we have brought that up in the past. But that is something that we need to still be very mindful of as a board, is how we're going to treat that, or else, you know, from now until eternity, we're going to be doing, uh, putting Band-Aids on that, on the shoulders along, had those oak trees there.
Up, up north, we use cold tar epoxy on the, uh, roots, and it really stopped it.
I'll ask him, I'll ask him if he's got another alternative, because root barrier is expensive.
It just goes, like you say.
It keeps it parallel on it, you know, I mean, we cut them all back as far as we can. Lake Commerce, which is no longer there, which is good. That really helped out. When you were in a corret, it was always flooded, so, yeah.
These, these are the exact things that at the meeting on the 20th, the residents, they see, they understand why the budget has to change. These are going back, they're getting worse.
Your sidewalks are my major concern, especially in front of the greens. I don't want to hit that one section going the wrong direction. Go over the handlebars, I mean, but it's, I don't have the funds right now to tear it all out and put a new in, so I'm waiting for the new budget to kick in, and that's probably the first section we're going to hit.
Chris, before we take the five-minute break, I have one question, and that's under number two, utility rate surcharge and relocation. In the second paragraph, you've got a lower Hawthorne well for 80 grand, and then two forest mains, and then you've got lower Hawthorne well again at 80. Is that just a typo?
Um, yes, it must be. We had, we had the three projects, and that's, those were the ones that Danny was bringing up today for the design portion, and it has been approved by the EP. So yeah, that's just a repeat.
Make sure. Thank you.
We'll take a quick five-minute break and then get back to the action agenda and consent agenda.
And recall, board members, not to engage any conversation other than pleasantries.
Hey, Tony? Tony?
Yes, sir.
I got the mail, a document from the Lee County Division of Elections, and it's a form that says, oh, the office. And they're telling me to get this thing signed and sent back to them with a check for $10. Is this premature?
Well, you're unopposed, correct, Ed?
I'm sorry?
You're, you are unopposed, correct?
Yes.
That's probably why they sent it to you, but your term doesn't begin until the second, the Tuesday following the election, second Tuesday. Why they're sending it, why they're sending it out early, I have no idea.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is just that I got it early, and it sends it, sent it back in, so, but I, I thought what you said is the deal. I just hold this.
Yeah, I would wait until the election day to sign it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
She doesn't look.
I showed you.
I showed you right here, I said, oh, I said, it's funny, it's, it's like we're there 15 minutes early. I love it.
You have your cameras.
He goes, funny. I'm shitting my camera behind my house, he never walked in. It's a funny department. I want some punchless.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Do you want me to think I'm blowing his house? Oh, we're the cameras. Mr. T, weird thing about bringing one of those bad vowels and a good one in there.
I just tried to pick up the sixteen, they couldn't work it. The, who are we using, who are we buying all the supplies from?
Those vowels all came from Ferguson.
Ferguson, glad we're using them, they, they've been talking to me a lot.
We should be getting better pricing through them now too, because I got them our GSA letter and I was talking to the sales guy. And so he got us one whole list of pricing.
He keeps calling me, asking me how we're coming on the meter deal and he's the one that led me to these guys up there. And they just seem to be very, very, very interested in helping us out.
They're very excited that we're going to be spending more. Yeah, they're very excited we're going to be spending more money.
And they're local, which is good.
Yeah.
They need you, they're right there.
And speaking of meters, meters, this will be done with our draft report at the end of the month and final the second week in September.
I was gonna ask that question.
Chris, does everybody get back?
No, let me get Kathy. Okay, here's Kathy.
I'm gonna be a bad pond because actually.
You go this way, I'll separate from that. Well, no, the two, the two ponds that we're talking about are doing the one whole well. You know, that one is already ours. That one is.
Thank you, Roger.
No, that's ours.
Yep.
This is.
This is what I have, I can't find it on this computer. I didn't see this on the budget anywhere. You know, if there was any. It should be included in here. If we use all of the reserve, we need even more.
We're regular engineering, then we had money from air raiders that I did to pay for that. Oh, flowway wear adjustments. And that was split into two years, it was such as last year and the.
It is, I didn't see it. Oh, so it's not, I was.
Hey, Chris, you may want to mute all the mics.
Okay, I'll remember that. Okay, we'll come back from break. And we'll move into the action agenda. And I'll, I'll take care of this, start off, we basically, it has to do with the adoption of the 2020 pond standards. And the board approved those standards at the last meeting. And, but there were several amendments that were made at the meeting. And then the board approved the pond standards with those amendments. But we just wanted to bring it back for final clarification. Those amendments have all been added to this document and also the resolution.
My motion too, to accept the adoption of the 2020 pond standards and resolutions would all be corrective amendment.
And Mrs. Flaherty, that would be also adopting resolution 2020 dash fourteen.
And I will also add that I will adopt whatever, resolution 2020 dash.
Fourteen.
You're fourteen?
Yes.
Fourteen, okay, thank you.
If there are any questions from the board members or anyone in the audience?
Question.
Tinkle?
Why is this referred to as exhibit A, is that because it's in the resolution, this is exhibit A?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because it's never, we've never had it as an exhibit.
Yeah.
And none of the changes that were.
The changes were verbatim, it's approved by the board last, they're just incorporated into this as a final document.
I'll second.
Are you taking this to any of the potential bidders?
Um, no, we're going to, those documents are being amended to reflect these pond standards. And also they're talking to the pond standards committee about implementation procedures. Because you're setting a policy, but when you get into implementation, there's some different viewpoints with that. And it's a different set of problems, so they'll be meeting in the next few weeks with the committee members on implementation and be issuing another bid document. Any further questions?
Is there a reason that we need to approve this until we get the bids?
This, this document will guide the bids as a policy document and the bids, the bid documents will refer back to the pond standards. One thing that Brian's been working with, with L, is to have all these services bid out individually and also by lake. So if there are some deductions you need to make in the budget, you can look at on an individual basis.
The only reason I bring all this up is I've looked at this stuff and you put this into the form of a specification and it's going to knock your socks off, what this is going to do to the budget.
Well, we know.
Knock your socks off. It's on my deal list, is why are we wasting time? Take, use this, the ordinary document, go take bids and then find out how serious you want to stay with this. We're sitting here, we have the budget for, for things that need to be, this is insanity doing this one. This is insanity. I know this is the force although against it, they did, so go ahead and do it.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. Take the vote, supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
No.
No. Okay, four to one, the motion passes to approve the pond standards and resolution 2020 fourteen, adopting those pond standards.
One, one further question. The 2021 budget that we just talked about is current things and money based on the value of what we have under the current specification, correct?
Well, that's true, we had a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which was what was in the budget this last year under those. We took money that we had for, I think it was the math, not the math metrics, but another item that moved a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So right now there is one hundred and, I mean, three hundred thousand dollars total. And also the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was budgeted this year for maintenance to the ponds and access to the D O has not been extended. So if you wanted to carry it forward, then you would have four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Or otherwise that just becomes retained there at the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move to the next item and that is Laura, is back to the website.
Now we can get to your question. All right, I was following up, this was also one of the items that was part of my request when I was hired, things that I was, I was asked to have, to tackle. Our website obviously is not ADA compliant. There was some work that had gone into it by my predecessors and I spoke to the same firm that we had talked to before, just to get some more information since they already had background. And if we were to leave our website exactly as it sits today, to make it ADA compliant, it will cost forty-five thousand dollars. Yeah, that was what I said too. So the current rate for converting a PDF file is four dollars and ninety-five cents per page, not per file, per page. And think about our board book, it's a hundred and whatever pages, so. We would be able to get a new site built, they could build it from scratch and obviously convert it all, convert over the pertinent content. Anywhere between four to ten thousand, depending on how fancy we want it to be. It would have everything in it that we're required by statute to have. But because there is so much clutter on our current website, there's really no way that I can get a decent quote until we figure out what we exactly want to keep. So the one thing I've done, and I did it without your approval because there was nothing on the pages anyway, was that I went in and removed all the pages that just said content coming soon. They've been like that for years, so I just took them off. There's really no point in pointing someone to a page that has nothing on it, so I removed those. But my recommendation is that we go back and look through the content that's existing on the site. Mainly in the, the board document area, there's stuff that goes all the way back to nineteen eighty-six that's on the site. We have like things from the inception of, inception of the CDD. And the charts on the next two pages have, oops. They have the layout of what's required, Tony and I have been talking a lot about this too. So what's required to have on the site is, and then when I'm proposing to have on the site, it'll be that third sheet with the proposed deletions. So the Board of Supervisors minutes right now, we have everything back there too, starting with December eleventh nineteen eighty-six through this meeting will be published out there, so we have everything out there. Proposing that we remove everything prior to fiscal fifteen, which is way more than we need to keep on the site as it is. Same with the adopted budgets, we only need to keep two years after they're adopted and proposing to keep five, just so we're consistent and have five years worth of data. Same with the audit reports, keep the five years worth of fiscal data, we're only required to have the most recent one out there. And then interim financial statements we have published, we are not actually required to have on our website, so that's just more data that's out there that puts us at risk of failing an audit or getting sued if someone would happen to check out the site. None of these documents will be lost, we have them all saved internally, they are backed up on both our server, our backup server and on the cloud. So if somebody needs to see them for some reason, we are able to pull them in the same format that they're on the website at this point. So we're not losing anything, we're just not publishing it. And we're well within our parameters for what we, the timeframe we need to have covered for that stuff. One other thing that Tony and I were talking about this morning, which is not on here and I'll bring this up at another meeting for a vote, is I sat in on a webinar on Friday, I think it was, about our, the videos that are on our website. We are at a huge risk of getting sued for not having closed caption on those videos. So my recommendation is that we remove them completely. There really isn't any need for us to have them on there, but I'll bring that.
You mean videos of the meetings?
Yes, there's no, yeah, there's no reason for us to even have those on the website. So that would be like one amendment that I would make to my request to just get rid of the videos, because that puts us at a huge risk.
That it's still be, so maybe come back to.
We have them saved, we have all, everything that's on the website, we have saved internally. And it's available if anybody puts a record request, we can, we can get it. And you have a website, I did put a tracker on there. We get an average of about anywhere from nine to fifteen visits on our website. So it's not, you don't get a lot of traffic. And the top ten lists of places where people go, obviously the homepage. The next two are, A my utility bill, and then utility bill, online payments, the pool, the soccer complex, contact us, about us, the cares act, utilities and the dock park, that's the top ten. Fifty-four percent of the hits that we get.
What is your guess of what it's going to cost us to revise it to what you're talking about?
I'm thinking we can do it for pretty close to the four to five thousand dollar mark because a lot of the stuff that's out there, I've been doing a lot of research and a lot of the conversions, I think we can take care of internally. So it would be just getting a nice clean site, it would look very similar to what we have now as far as the layout. But I think to have a clean site with just what we need to have on it, on it, and don't put ourselves at risk for anything that doesn't need to be there.
So Laura, a couple of questions. So I think if we're limiting information, access to information on our website, I think the biggest thing that we can do is make our meetings, you know, definitely more, you know, increase the access to the meetings. And I think we're doing that, we, we've had to do it COVID, so we have the, you know, go to meeting that we're using. I know, I think the county and other organizations actually upload theirs, well, one, they're live. And I think they're uploaded or stored on like YouTube and, and even Facebook Live and things of that nature. There's different, there's different applications that you can use from a, from a streaming perspective that will, that will cascade that recording to multiple outlets. Is that something that you've looked at? And if you haven't, I'd love to get the board's take on us being able to do that. Because, you know, I think if you, either you attend the meetings live, you attend them virtually, or you go back and look at those recorded meetings. If we can offer those three options, that keeps our residents informed, I think at a very high level. And then if there is subsequent information that's requested, normally it's very specific. And they would probably put in an information request anyway, because no one is wanting, wants to go through hundreds of documents in order to find something that they're looking for. So I, I think it's, as long as we have staff and a reasonable turnaround for that request, I think it's fine. But my major point is getting our meetings as accessible as possible. Both from a, a virtual perspective and being able to go back and look at recent meetings in like a YouTube or something like that.
I do believe they have a YouTube channel, so I would have to check to see what kind of liability that puts on us from an ADA compliant thing. I'm not sure if it applies to that or not, so that'd be something Tony and I could work on together. I have no problem uploading them there and I, I don't know how that works as far as providing links. We do have a Facebook page as well, which I have just started posting things on, hadn't been touched in over a year. So trying to keep that as a, another channel of ways to reach out to the community and keep them advised is what's.
Yeah, kudos to the creation of the Gateway Commons Pool, they still pay, you saw that today? That's, that's fantastic.
That was all Tim.
But when COVID went in and we go back to normal, is there any reason we can't still stay Zoom? I think that's what Doug said, still stay Zoom? Because we're doing it with our BJOA and we're going to stay this way because people could come in and chat. And the manager, our cam, sits there and monitors the questions and then feeds them in during the conversation. You have somewhat get off the break, having everybody talk and depending, but the one thing, it keeps everybody informed. And maybe there's some of these people even after we're allowed to return, they still aren't going to do it.
Right, no, there's, there's nothing, that doesn't put us at any kind of risk because we're technically broadcasting the hype right now, so we don't have any, we're not required as far as, I know, Tony can tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, yeah, let me, let me, let me, let me jump in on assuming for a second, once the COVID is over and a physical quorum has to be, a quorum has to be physically established, then the only opportunity for a board member to participate remotely will be exceptional circumstances. So you can't just say.
Residents.
Well, if the board wants to broadcast them, the board can continue to broadcast, whether or not the board wants to then continue to make it publicly accessible, they can, recognizing you have to have the same kind of parameters might need to be in place. And then we, it might be possible, but again, the board members will need to be physically present.
Right, yeah, and I was, I wasn't, my suggestion was not to alter that, but I agree with, with Ed's comment that, you know, a Zoom meeting platform, one, it actually puts the content that people want to see in the meeting. Because no one really cares to sit there and watch a screen of just us, you know, twenty feet away. They want to see what's being discussed, the documentation that's being, being reviewed. So my point is, I, I like the, I like the, the web meeting delivery from a virtual perspective for our residents. And if we can, can maintain that as well as upload or have that even streamed live through YouTube or Facebook, you know, concurrently, which you can do. I think, again, it's, it's, one, it's, it's driving transparency to the board. Two, it's driving accessibility to meetings. So we don't care if you're, if you're attend in a seat or if you're watching from home. It keeps the residents informed for those that, that want to do that. And then backing that up on YouTube so you can, you can find them at a, at a later time.
Yeah, from, from, I don't like to shoot from the hip, but just off the cuff, it appears not to be a problem, appears doable, but I'll check into it. And a couple of other aspects on the website, just as an update. I think I've mentioned this too before at board meetings, the legislature adopted a new law effective July first, where the audit report, if it's been filed and submitted electronically to the auditor general, the actual audit report does not need to be posted online, just a link to the auditor general can be provided. And that will save pages. And additionally, the board can make a decision, the law has also been changed that the agenda has to be posted seven days in advance. But the backup materials no longer have to be posted seven days in advance. But again, the board can make a policy decision to keep doing what they're doing to provide as many documents in advance to the community so they can see what's going to be discussed.
Yeah, well, and even to that point, I think we can probably make a determination what we want to push forward. I mean, I, I think the, the board book in its entirety is probably not something that needs to be pushed out to the public, you know, prior, prior to, because it changes. So it, there is a potential for it to change or addition. So I think we could limit what we put out there, but as long as that information is accessible to the residents, I, you know, I do want to make sure that that's something that we support.
Yeah, and that there's, there's, what we're actually required by law to have on the site is considerably less than what we have right now. And I, I do, I'll put the link, I found that on after the table together, but I can definitely put that in there too and make sure that's all compliant.
Thank you. You said that.
This sounds really great. I, I really like what you've done here. And I think to get the clutter off the website makes a lot of sense. And thank you for looking into this. I, Tony, do we need a vote on this or can we just give her the direction to continue moving forward with what she's doing?
I, I think it's appropriate just to give her our consensus to get direction to continue moving forward.
I did have a question. Kathleen had a question, Margaret.
Okay.
Okay. You said that the required retention time is one year or two years. It's not longer than that? I thought it was.
It is not. Not, not to be published on the website. There's a difference between record retention and the website publishing. So those are the standards for what needs to be kept on the website. And actually I can tell you from the requests that we've been getting, records requests, they're so obscure that nothing, they, people would not be able to self-speak on the website anyway. There would be things we would have to look up. So.
Thank you. Thank you for this.
And I'm still up.
So is he looking, said, was or was not a need for a motion?
No need for a motion, that's correct.
So it's okay for me to follow. Okay, thank you. Next was the proposed employee handbook update.
Yeah. And again, I think I'll jump in for just a second there. The staff has been working on proposed revisions to the manual, to the, to the handbook. And what you have, and what was sent separately by email were a product of the staff's draft, my review and comments, and an initial review by Suzanne Boyd, who was an outside expert in labor law. And there are some additional items that Suzanne may want to look at. And this was just to give the board a preview of what might be coming to the board in the near future for a formal adoption and consideration. To, as with anything else, based upon circumstances, evolving standards and changing laws, it's good to have an update and we recommend it might be actually an annual update. So I don't know, Laura, if you have, you want to go in summary of what it's contained or if any board members have any initial questions?
The last time it was updated was March of 2018, from what I could find. So because we made a change and are no longer doing, but we added the footer to each page. You can tell when it was updated. Changed time off approval from district manager to their supervisor because I didn't feel that everybody had to ask Chris if they could have off. I figured their supervisor can approve it. We did, we had an incident where we needed a policy to be able to conduct a reasonable suspicion test. There was no guidelines in our handbook. So I've added that. We did say that we could do the testing, but there was no policy for how to make that happen. So that's been added. The weapons policy was added. Under the payroll section, I updated that just to request, to reflect that we are no longer doing paper time sheets. We're doing everything online now. So it just, that was the only change there. And then actually the COVID, at the advice of Suzanne Boyd, that will be a separate policy outside of the handbook because it changes so much that instead of having the handbook change all the time, we're going to just do that outside of the handbook. And again, as Tony had said in the, that what you got, there's come, changes that he made and I made, ours are kind of combined and then Suzanne Boyd's were in there as well. And she is actually off this week, but when she comes back next week, she had some concerns about the wording of the call, on-call policy. And she and I will be discussing that next week and recommending some changes to that as well.
Who's she with?
She's an outside law firm. She's Boy, Agnew and.
Potanovic.
Yeah, Potanovic.
Yeah, she, yeah, she used to be with Henderson Franklin and the employment law section left Henderson Franklin. And she's part of the employment law section that left and started her own firm with a couple of the partners.
So this went by, this went through Tony and her after, I, I mean by proposed changes, Tony looked at it, Suzanne looked at it and this is what came back.
So she must not have a very, very good non-compete or they did.
I'm sorry, Ed?
They must not have a very good non-compete then.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they have with Henderson Franklin. Well, you can't, the attorneys generally don't have, but you have to be careful about non-competes. And besides, Suzanne represented the district and did the prior reviews and prior revisions to the manual when she was with Henderson Franklin.
Questions? Yeah. I just have a quick question. So Laura, I think it'd probably be a good idea if, is, when this gets ratified or voted on by the board, we should probably do a, at one of the upcoming staff meetings, just do a handbook review. So we can communicate any, any changes to the staff, see if there's any questions.
Right. I had that under my recommendation that once this is all approved, that, well, I didn't say that we were going to have a meeting, but the employees will receive it, sign off on it and acknowledge that they understand the changes.
Yeah. And Doug, to your question and follow up to Laura's, at the last page of the document, page 49 has a statement or receipt of policies. So that's why, yeah, when Laura or Chris conducts that meeting, hands everything out, they get a copy signed back. Sign copy back from each employee.
I'm trying to minimize the changes too. So we just kind of take care of them all at once. Instead of coming back every board meeting saying, I want to change this, I want to change this.
Can I talk now? Because I started to before. Okay. I did talk this over with Tony. It's, except our termination processing procedures. It's number four. It says the district manager shall conduct an exit interview with the team member. I think that should be changed. If we should put the district manager or someone else, I don't think the district manager should do the opposite. Maybe they.
Maybe we could change that too, Tony, because I know you put in somewhere else where it said just district manager. You change it to district manager or business manager, which would be my solid interest.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm sorry?
Most of the HR or their supervisor. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that.
Okay. I guess I didn't see that one. I must've looked over.
Right. Well, I have called Tony. He's checking most of the questions.
I think it should include both the district manager or business manager.
Yeah, that's what we said earlier in the handbook too. There was a spot where we changed something. It says district manager or business manager.
That's Bill.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? We'll bring in final revisions after I have a chance to talk to Suzanne about the call policy. I'll bring that for your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, last item. We have on the action agenda is a request for a change order Lake 83, Brian.
Lake 840. Good news is we're about them. This change order is because unfortunately we thought it was 800 linear feet and the order would be at scale with, had to be on a 22 by 34. I was given the footage. I didn't see that either. So actually the linear footage was 1458, which was by others on our print that did not allocate for rock or sod or anything else. And the only way to make this corrective was to put number four stone down. Stone is all down as of yesterday. They're over there finishing up putting sod in the areas where we're rodded. And the gentleman's yard, even a couple of other yards that we're fixing everything back. We're hoping by tomorrow, all the sod should be done. And we have a Flavia irrigation guy, we're going to meet next week to come and turn all the sprinklers on to make sure we didn't miss any busted heads or none of that. So not long wood. Next Friday, we should be done with Lake 83 and we'll put that later.
This has nothing to do with the punch order, correct?
It's all part of it.
One that Tyler did just today?
I, Flavia and Elle did the punch list.
Okay. So is it possible that I get a copy of the punch list? And there's Mr. Nelson here because Tyler was supposed to be, and I like to see his too. Mr. Schulecker, could you contact the punch list so I can prepare for Joe?
Did we get worked out the issue of some of the damages that we're finger pointing on? Who's going to repair it?
Yes, we, Matt tire, all the areas where the laterals and all the plantings were done, all those washouts are fixed. We had just a few other ones, but that's where Abby did the work prior, which will be done on, before we do the yearly. So that way, the way the water goes back down, of course, but yeah. Flavia has a couple of them and sod, sod is all being addressed. And on this go around all the sod, because with a couple of gentlemen, it was nice enough to let us use the pathway between and we really flooded it. So we're taking care of that yard. It's big.
And the change order is Abby?
Yes.
So we don't have any issue going for a SRA?
Yeah, we had Abby, the change order, he gave the work to Matt tires. So we, that way we made sure we all followed it with the pathers to be up there.
So they do approve change order first.
Here we have a motion in a second. Any questions from the board members?
Thanks for giving this to me.
It's, I'm in a crying life.
Thank you for that. I'm not going to put you in a corner. And we have a motion in a second. I'll call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes. And we will be amending our application with DEP for additional funds to cover this. And they get a little more, the 10% available for the last three lakes. It will be done when the water goes down.
And next we move to the consent agenda item. We have minutes, page 23rd from P-PAC and July 2nd date for the board meeting and also the financial report. Any? Second?
Yeah.
B?
I want to speak. That's, yes.
B, okay.
Oh, then I make motion to approve A, C and D.
We have a motion and a second to prove consent items, A, C and D. Any questions? Okay, we'll call the vote for that. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
And Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay. A, C and D are approved, five to O. And what are the issues with B, July 2nd?
Okay, agenda page 112, because this is a public hearing. It says board members were asked for questions and comments. I would like those questions and comments and answers that were given to us.
Can you go to that page? So we can see them.
Agenda page 112.
Whoa.
It is a public hearing. I think that's important question. Here. Down farther.
So what you're saying is to.
Where it says here, where it says board members were asked for questions.
Yeah.
I think that because those are public, those questions and answers should be put in the minutes.
I agree with that.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I just think that especially because it's a public hearing. I'm not finished. I have several minutes. Okay. The next one, page 113. I noticed it said so when the thing that we approved, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Limitation requirement on sunlight. Didn't we say 30 minutes after sunrise? Just wondering, should it be 30 minutes after sunrise?
No, 30 minutes before sunset.
Yeah.
30 after sunrise.
Yeah. Shouldn't that be, it says requirements on sunlight, but I think we've said sunrise, right?
It's, it's on the board. It's both sunset and.
30 minutes after sunrise, 30 minutes before sunset.
That's what you're saying. It says limitation. You want that 30 minute.
I wanted 30 minutes. So that. So that, there was a brought back. Again, we have it.
We have it on our signs at the pool.
Yeah, but did she say in the minute?
In the minute. So I want to make sure it's clear. It said I didn't.
Yeah, let's take the end 30 minute.
Yeah, I just. Okay. And then we want to go over to page 114. It says a discussion ensued regarding trucks and vehicle leaving Alton. I think we need to write, to say that self, people and Mrs. Feinberg said and had seen and reported that things were going on there. It was just not a fine discussion. It was more specific that trucks versus. Mr. Kinkle said city furniture and residents complained to, to both Mrs. Feinberg and myself and the. I think that should have been put in.
Kathy, I could not hear what you were saying.
Okay, I get my teacher's voice. I don't want to get affected.
It was sprayed before the meeting.
Oh, okay. I, I said that on page 114, where it says the discussion, it should read that Mrs. Feinberg and Mr. Tinkle stated they saw trucks, Mr. Tinkle and myself saw city furniture trucks and that. Feinberg and myself have been contacted by residents because of people leaving Pelican Reserve to use the gateway entrance. And it should be more specific so that it doesn't just say discussion.
It says 179, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what I would suggest is that Mrs. Flaherty outlined, because this is quite lengthy, that Mrs. Flaherty send to the staff proposal vision so that we have a redlined version of the minutes and table this to the next board meeting. And what also may happen in the future, if there are any items of a particularly sensitive nature or for the community or high visibility, the board may want to say please to Maryland or to do more verbatim version of the minutes.
So I'll make a motion to get the corrections that Mrs. Flaherty wants in these and to bring them back to the next meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second to get a clarification and bring the meeting minutes back with revisions. And we call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
A five to O to clarify and bring, oh, I'm sorry. To bring clarification to those meeting minutes, make adjustments and bring them back to the board approval of August 20th. And with that, we move to supervisor comments and go down the line. Supervisor Flaherty? No comments? Okay, Supervisor Guy, any comments?
No comments.
Okay, Supervisor Banks?
No comments.
Okay. Supervisor Feinberg, final comments?
No.
Supervisor Tinkle? Okay.
I've got several, but they're.
Don't disappoint us.
They're all very fast. First, our I-75 crossing letter to FDOT in Arto.
No, sir, but I will follow up with them and we're trying to get a meeting put together with them.
Okay. Second thing, just for, it's on, so it's on the agenda day or discussion. Tree line lights. I went out and looked at them today and you're going to have the meeting with those people this next week, I understand.
It is on the agenda for P-PAC next week, Thursday.
Unless they compete of some way, that, that teardrop sign is going to be very difficult to shade or reflect. Lots of luck with that one. Gateway Greens, we've got an interesting issue. Coming out of Gateway Greens pursuant to DOT requirements, we have a stop sign. The unfortunate thing is if you stop your vehicle, truck, car, whatever, at the stop sign, you've got a sidewalk or a path that's eight foot wide that goes across Gateway Greens, perpendicularly across, parallel to Gateway Boulevard. Come up on you so fast. If you pull on out, they don't realize. They'll come up on you so fast, if you pull on out, they don't realize, they don't, that the vehicle doesn't see you. My question is, and I've got residents asking, I know we can't put, or I don't know, I've just never seen anybody put a stop sign on a sidewalk. But how do we take people that are riding bikes, golf carts, motorcycles, whatever, on that path that's on the West Side Gateway Boulevard? How do we indicate to them that they're approaching an intersection where it's, it's blind? More than what I guess, type of out there, you look both directions, by the time you look back to turn, somebody is right in front, and they catch on a blind eye. And I'm interested to say, is there anything that we can put like a, be here intersection or something like that to slow the people that are on the sidewalk down? Walkers, joggers, bicycles, golf carts are scary. I don't know what else, what to do. But we need something to let people know that are on those, that car path, that sidewalk, that that intersection is, is dangerous and a blind spot to the drivers. And I think the cars and the trucks are going to win every time there is a collision.
I've seen stop signs on golf cart paths before it reaches the road, Brian, you know, could you put them up there?
I, I unfortunately don't hear my answer. Nobody yield pedestrians is... I ride my bike all the time, I walk, I don't care where you're at on Gateway Boulevard or on the sidewalks or nothing, no people yield to pedestrians, period. What I should do is put more people watch for pedestrians, because I've almost been hit by somebody coming out of your development.
It's dangerous.
I've also been hit coming out of my development, because there's that crosswalk. Now they're going to put a roundabout in front of it, so it's going to be fun.
Maybe we can get together and talk about this.
Yeah, and in all respect...
I agree with you, it's very, it's scary.
It's dangerous, and unfortunately, the reason you have to pull out so far coming out of yours, is because the other tree's watching the vision.
Thank you, I wouldn't say it.
Being your public works manager, I'll tell you what this is going to do.
Going, that's true. The change, the change always solves our common problem. Next item.
Yeah, and Ed, 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 one, as you know, well, one aspect of it has to be MUTCD compliant, I mean, whatever, whatever's done, I think that's given.
I, yeah, I understand that. Next item, I have to consider update. Do we have a study report coming?
We have a draft report that'll be complete by the end of August, and the final report will be presented the second week in September, according to my update from this morning.
Thank you. And my last one, in inclusive minds, I have to ask, whatever happened to Joe DeSirbo? Where are we at with our, what was the word we used?
Yellow brick road?
Yeah, yellow brick road, but what would you call it? Our retreats, our retreat, our retreats.
Actually, uh...
Where are we at with it?
Well, with him, we aren't doing anything. When he left last time, I think that he concluded that he was done. And Laura and I have been putting together, Laura's been working with Mr. Banks for an organizational meeting after the board election, to sit down and have a similar priority setting session. Yes, and also ethics, that Tony would bring into that, and put together a strategic plan for the upcoming year.
Oh, I, thank you. Okay. I can do adjourn.
So motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned officially, 5:53.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
You too.